You created it.
You created it.
What yours?
Um, no, when you created the webinar, you created it on yours. That was.
And Josh, you ready to start the meeting?
Uh, yeah, we're ready.
Stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, welcome everyone to the August first, twenty twenty-two Select Board Meeting for Long Meadow. Confirming member access, this is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Yes.
Dan Zwerco.
Yes.
Tom Luccusa.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Yes.
Mike Barbieri.
Yes.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town websites, the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival at the meeting. I will call on residents in the order from which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote to your panelists, unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star nine to, star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual has four to three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Okay. All right, we'll open the session. If anyone is using audio or video recording other than the town, please announce it to everyone present. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We begin as always with the announcements. Connecticut River Valley drought status update, level-two significant drought. Our region is currently in a level-two significant drought, and if the current conditions continue, Long Meadow will enter a level-three critical drought. What does this mean? Rain has been well below normal for over three months. Streams are low and nearing extreme low flows in some areas. Fire danger is steadily increasing, and there is a strain on some water supplies. What can you do? Minimizing, minimize overall water use, limit outdoor watering to handheld hoses or watering cans, temporarily limit installation of new landscapes and plans. For some great tips on conserving water both indoors and outdoors, and to check for updates in our water region's drought status, please visit the Department of Public Works Water Conservation page at www-longmeadow.org/waterconservation. Treasurer and Collector's Office, reminder that real estate and personal property taxes are due today, Monday, August first. Additionally, the Treasurer and Collector's Office will be closed from Tuesday, August ninth through Thursday, August eleventh for staff training. East Long Meadow Maple Street Construction. Please be advised that starting Monday, August first, Palmer Paving will begin reconstruction work on Maple Street in East Long Meadow. Major traffic delays and detours are expected. Please seek an alternate route. All right, next up, we have board and committee appointments. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, I'm going to do this all in one motion. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kimberly Barton to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That we appoint Nanu Taurani to a three-year term on the Energy and Sustainability Committee expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That we appoint Jane Crosby, Clifford Scott, and Anne Slick to the Historic District Commission, each for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We appoint Susan Shepherd to the Recycling Committee for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We appoint Catherine Kukab to a three-year term expiring twenty twenty-five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to the Tree Committee.
Any second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right, all is in favor? All is opposed? All right, we have a public hearing that will enter into at seven thirty. Any resident comments? Okay. Any Select Board comments? Tom?
Well, I was just recently looking at the paper about Wilbraham, who were in the process of building an adult center or senior center. And I just am comforted knowing that we already have ours. The price that they're going to pay is going to be significantly more than ours because of the price of everything needed to do that, including labor and, and all sorts of supplies are going to be higher. And the other thing that's really significant, and we discussed this at the time of the decision, is that we had interest rates at a very reasonable level. And so we saved a lot of money there. And so it's, as you, the members of town, look back at our adult center and what we ended up with, and look at what Wilbraham was going through, I hope you'll feel as good as I do about the decisions we made years ago and how they've, you know, we're not facing them in the current, current conditions. That's about it.
Next, Tom. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. Last couple of weeks, I've attended a, a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commissions, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, they generally are the ones who look at road projects that are funded by the state and through federal government, to, by the federal government through the state. There's been no changes in the, in the status of, of major roads. The one they continue to track for Long Meadow is, is Route five, although they're also active in what we'll talk about later tonight, which is the Blueberry Hill Regional Safe Schools Route. That's also under the auspices of the Massachusetts Department of, I think it's the Department of Environmental Science and Energy, I think, isn't it?
I think it's Mass DOT.
Yeah, Mass DOT, right, thank you. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that in tonight's packet, I included a copy of the letter that was sent to the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board requesting reimbursement of, of funds that were spent, in our opinion, improperly, I'll say that nicely, during the prior administration. I've not heard back anything from them yet, and had a couple of inquiries from people outside town of Long Meadow, other towns who have participated with us, they've all been notified, but if we hear anything, we'll let you know.
I appreciate your continued work on that, Mark. Anybody else? All right, Town Manager Report.
Thank you. So, an update on EV chargers. I'm pleased to report that the Mass Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, referred to as Mass EVIP, we had submitted some grant applications for Wolf Swamp Athletic Fields and Long Meadow High School, and those were approved. The grant for the two dual-part charges at the high school will cover ten thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars at the purchase price, and the Wolf Swamp grant will cover nine thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars for those two dual-part charges at Wolf Swamp. Catch basin work is going to be beginning soon. We talked about this briefly at the last meeting, but I'm happy to report that we received bids to repair or replace thirty-six failing catch basins. The low bidder was CNA Construction at a cost of two hundred and eighty-five thousand sixty-five dollars. Work is going to start soon, and care is going to be given to the locations near the schools to be completed either before school start, before school starts or around the school schedule, so it doesn't interrupt traffic. All work is expected to be completed by November fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Funds for this project are going to be covered by the town's allocation of the American Rescue Plan, ARPA allocation. And Greenwood Pool, the liner was put out to bid, quotes are being collected for the cover. And in response to a collection, a question at the last Select Board Meeting on July eighteenth, it does appear that the liner could be eligible for CPA funding based on our review of the Community Preservation Coalition's eligibility guidance. There was an amendment to the CPA in two thousand and twelve that broadened the law to allow for additional rehabilitation of existing outdoor rec facilities. I won't read that whole excerpt there from their website, but to be certain, we have made a formal inquiry to the Coalition via their website, and we're waiting for a response back from them. Actually, a direct contact, I'm sorry. We had reached out on another matter earlier in the fall, so we're reaching back out to this person to see if we could get clarity on whether this would be a covered item. The CPC process is expected to start in September. They're starting two months or so earlier, three months actually, than they have in the years past, so it will allow them more time to thoroughly review applications. So these projects that they're going to begin reviewing early this fall are for the annual town meeting in May twenty twenty-three. We, depending on the answer we get back from the Coalition, we will look at the possibility of applying even retroactively for that liner. I'm not entirely sure that that's allowed, but we will explore that further.
Go ahead, Tom.
In terms of the electrical vehicle chargers, I noticed the two with the adult center. Are they just waiting for us to come up with a, a vote tonight before they open those, or is that?
Yes, the, the chargers at the DPW and the adult center have been installed, they're not active. So we needed to develop that policy. We have a draft one later on in your agenda tonight for either discussion or vote, where you could discuss and then vote at your next meeting. But there, even if you vote tonight, they won't be turned on tomorrow. We have a lot of backroom work to do in terms of setting up the processing systems and the software that accompanies them.
But who has time to draft a policy like that?
We have Corinne here tonight to help speak to that.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'm interested in pursuing this Greenwood Pool cover and liner payment out of community preservation. And so I guess the question is, what are, what are the next steps? And does the Select Board have a, a position there in terms of, you know, we theoretically have liaisons to all these committees. Shouldn't we be going to them? Do we wait until you hear back from this, this organization, that the Coalition, or, you know, because it seems to me that the time to do this is at the fall town meeting. And, and just for people at home who don't understand this, the, the, the Community Preservation had, had recommended funding of several, three hundred thousand dollars, I believe, it was for a skate park that was not approved. And so there is money in the Community Preservation Fund that from last year that has not been expended. That is, in addition to what, as Lynn said, they're looking, they're going to start this fall looking at new projects. That will have a new pool of money, I assume, for next year that's being raised this tax year. And so my hope would be that we could get funding from what's, you know, I tease the money, or leftover funds, but not expended funds last year and get that authorized for the, this pool liner and cover, because that would free up tax dollars that we would then not have to tax our residents to have, to, to pay for. So I guess my question is, do we go do something, or is this all on you?
I do not plan this for a fall town meeting warrant article. The CPC would have to have a funding process for applications before October fourth. That would require them to add an entirely new application schedule that I don't believe, we haven't had conversations with them about doing that yet. Given that they're looking to start in September in advance of the May town meeting, I, I don't see there being enough time to do that. However, that doesn't preclude us from applying during the regular round in September for the liner for reimbursement essentially, or changing of how we're planning to pay for the liner at the May town meeting. Right now, the liner was planned to be a bonded project. We can still certainly go that route. Unless we have a successful application from the Community Preservation Committee, we could switch the funding source. So we're looking at all of that. I should have some more information for you, hopefully by the August meeting, if not your September, I think it's first meeting, no, September sixth meeting.
So, so essentially what you're saying, Lynn, is we could go in, in the annual town meeting in May and say, you know, the motion would say, the article would say something like, you know, reallocate funds for, for this project from Community Preservation and then delete the, the capital appropriation, because we have to unvote.
We would rescind the borrowing authority, yep.
Authority, okay. So you're, you're saying that's the appropriate time to do it, and as long as it's done, I guess since May is still the current fiscal year, if it passed, if that all worked, we could actually pay for it.
Right, and I believe, I believe we'd be fine funding-wise in the current fiscal year, because, like you said, they have such a large unspent amount of money in their Community Preservation account for this current fiscal year. I think we could do it literally the next day, but I'm verifying all of that still. I just had an initial conversation with the CFO this morning about it.
Thank you.
And if all passed, they'd have the pool up and running for next summer?
Uh, yeah, the contract that's already been signed for the liner will have it completed by May fifteenth, regardless of the funding source.
And this is just jogging my brain, do we have any idea what's going on with Bliss?
Bliss had an estimate for engineering design and contract oversight of ninety-six thousand dollars. We don't have a funding source identified for that. I looked at that contract, or that proposal, actually today. Phase one, which is really the phase we need if we were to apply for Community Preservation funding, is thirty-one thousand dollars. We don't have a funding source identified for that yet, so I'm waiting to see where some year-end closeout lands with some of our other budget line items to figure out if there's funding to at least move phase one forward so that we could be prepared to apply for a Community Preservation application in September.
So we might be a couple of steps away from even getting a handle on what Bliss is going to cost to fix.
Correct, and one of my, the other pieces of it that always accompanies this for me is the difficulty we've had hiring lifeguards. We, up until, I think, two weeks into operating Greenwood, we didn't have enough to be open seven days a week. So, and that's just one pool. So I'm, I'm concerned that we could go move forward and spend all this money and get Bliss back online and then not have the staffing capacity to actually open the pool. It's a whole, it's a separate conversation, but it does, does weigh on my mind when we're looking at spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to get this facility back and running.
So we are, we're going to the town to ask for money, this is all, we'll have to put it all in context?
Right.
Okay.
But, Josh, if I could, but Lynn, my, you know, I've read a couple of things in the last couple of weeks about the, the Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund. You know, we sell pool passes, you know, for the pool. You know, is there any, now, I know much of that pays for lifeguards and use the pool, but I assume that money goes into a revolving fund as opposed to, you know, is there any option of doing that to get at least this thirty-one thousand dollars for phase one?
Yeah, so when I was talking about seeing where the year-end falls with some of these budget line items, the revolving fund is that, is essentially that.
Okay.
A lot of the indirect charges were just applied. The revolving fund for Parks and Rec pays for the benefits for all of the staff, so a lot of that assessment was just completed. Now we need to wait and see with the last bill warrant that was just paid for the closing out of FY twenty-two, where we stand in terms of funds in that.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Approval of the August first, twenty twenty-two draft minutes.
Yeah, I move that we accept the July fifth minutes for the Select Board.
And the, the pen and me, a second?
Second.
And I, I sent over a typo to Mark today, the pen and me got the best of me. So if we just have it, subject to that change, I already sent over. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Further old business, Historic District slash Historical Commission Certified Local Government Application. So we heard about this last, last meeting from Tim, and I did a little more, I looked into this a little bit more. I, I can't, I kept looking for the catch and I just, I, I don't see it, which is, hopefully that, that's just the case, but it seems like a pretty good deal for Long Meadow. So I, anybody else want to speak on that? We have a motion to, to accept and sign the agreement, or the application?
I'll, I'll move, we approve the application for becoming a certified local government as proposed at the last meeting.
Second.
All right, I mean, all is in favor? And then next on the agenda, Select Board MEPA comment submission on the EverSource Natural Gas Pipeline Project. The Select Board, through its, through the town's attorney on this matter, sent a letter to the MEPA, as we've discussed at other meetings, raising some questions and pushing for EverSource to include certain things in its filing with MEPA. And we had to discuss it in closed session prior to its being submitted, but when it's submitted, it's a public record. So it's attached to the agenda for everyone to take a look at. I, I think that it's pretty strong and raises a lot of really tough questions for EverSource to have to tackle on environmental justice and climate change and the intersection of those two things, as well as a lot of concerns of the residents. So I encourage everyone to take a look at this and gives, give everyone a, a good idea of where the, what the town's, what they've been pressing on. And just so everyone, to reiterate with everyone, this is just the first part of this. The EFS, EFSP will be the next filing that will even go beyond what we brought up here. So again, it, it's on the agenda, and I hope everyone gets a chance to take a look at it. Any comments for the rest of the board, Tom?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, we're just putting this letter out here, but there was a lot of discussion among the four of us, well, five of us, Steve was there. And I just find it helpful, I think that between, like, the four of us that are left, we'll make the best decision we can, you know? And it's, and I think we should just put everything on the table, and I was glad that that happened when we discussed this letter. And there were some changes that took place, and they wouldn't have happened if we didn't say something. So appreciate everyone's comments.
Okay. Anything else? All right, moving on to.
We'll go up to the public hearing?
Oh, sure, yeah, we can get, got a minute, that's, that's fine. Yep, so we have a motion to enter the public hearing.
I'll move we enter a public hearing on the liquor license application for the kitchen.
In second.
Okay, all is in favor? All right, can approach? Oh, right, middle's fine, thanks.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. My name is Sam Prickett. I am here on behalf of Mr. David Blaze and with Mr. David Blaze regarding the application for the liquor license amendment for the Long Meadow Kitchen. In short, Mr. Blaze intends to, has signed a purchase and sale to purchase the Long Meadow Kitchen in its entirety, necessitating the amendments requested for the stock ownership and management and change of principles.
I'll begin. So I do a lot of these, why is this being structured as a stock transfer rather than a transfer of license?
Essentially because he's purchasing the business entity rather than a purchase of the business assets, which is another common form of business transfer.
Okay. And Mr. Blaze, have you been the manager of a liquor license before?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And you have worked at the, you worked at the kitchen, though?
Yes.
Are you currently there?
I'm currently there, yes.
Okay.
And were you working there when they were serving alcohol?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any issues with the kitchen? Okay, like to keep it that way, of course.
You and me both.
Are your tips trained?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you have an ID checking machine there?
Do not currently.
Okay.
It's up to the bartender.
Is all the bartenders tips trained?
Anyone who will be serving alcohol will be required to be tip trained.
Okay.
Tip certified.
Everyone should be checking IDs, you know, Long Meadow does things, the state does things, so we don't want to see you back in front of us.
Nope.
Is there, I know this is the redacted version, was financials provided for the cash?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the sale agreement as well.
Great, okay. All right. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, you know, when we look at people who are serving in town, you know, we always look at underage drinkers, but I always want to remind people not to serve people who aren't intoxicated, you know, to try to have a sense of that, because that's a, a big problem. You're very close to several schools there.
Of course.
And, and of course, all the parking and all, you know, so a, a person who is drunk could cause a lot of havoc, of course, in the town. So just, you know, it's really important.
Yeah, we take it very seriously. Currently a full liquor license, so it's all the practices that we have in place now, we will continue.
Great, yeah, we've never had a problem with the way down, so.
Anybody else?
Before we, before we end, should be noted that Mr. Barquette, the current owner, is going to be staying on to help with the transition as well. So there should be plenty of status quo with the current management.
I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna add what Tom and, and Tom Luccusa and Mr. Levine have said, and that just a reminder that in Long Meadow, we take liquor licenses seriously. You've worked here, you know that. We guarantee you that we will do compliance checks.
Sure.
And we've had a great success with the Long Meadow Kitchen, we hope to continue that, and I wish you the best of luck in your new endeavor.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move we close the hearing.
Second.
All is in favor? Okay, any discussion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the transfer of ownership of the kitchen and the liquor license management.
One second.
Any further discussion? I'll just note that there's no members of the public here, I should have asked, and nobody online, correct?
That's a good point.
Great, we gotta get back in the habit.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, if there's no further discussion, all is in favor? All right, congratulations, best of luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you all.
Welcome to town, well, welcome back. New capacity.
Thanks again.
What, what was your food truck?
Uh, it was called Blaze and Johnny's Doghouse.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, right up the, same hot dogs, so that's not going to change. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, we have a draft DEI, sorry, draft DEI committee charge, Corinne?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so per our last conversation at the last Select Board Meeting, I drafted a DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee Charge for the Select Board's review. This was largely based off of the format that Concord had adopted in theirs, which was acceptable to the board at the last meeting, and I did include some other, I don't know if best practices is the word, but, or phrase, but some other good ideas that I saw in several other Massachusetts communities as well. I tried to reflect the gist of our conversation where this DEI committee would be largely external-facing. There is a note in the, I guess I'll summarize by section. So the, the purpose, the memo, the draft proposal starts with purpose, and the purpose is to increase cooperation, understanding, and dialogue among Long Meadow residents, commercial and institutional entities, and other stakeholders of diverse cultural, religious, socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic and experiential backgrounds. I'm not going to read, you know, all of this to you, but for everyone at home or viewing, I think it's important to summarize. So the next section here is the scope, and it goes on to cover and define what diversity, equity, and inclusion, each as separate terms, mean in the face of this draft. So diversity referring to representation of different populations that have been historically underrepresented. underrepresented, underrepresented socially, politically or economically in Long Meadow and I should say in the nation at large. Equity is an approach that the committee will take that's based in fairness to ensuring everyone is given equal opportunity. And I made sure in this document to differentiate the term equity from equality, which I think often are used interchangeably. The idea being that equality means everyone is given equal opportunity, literally the same opportunity, whereas equity recognizes that not everyone is starting at the same place. And so sometimes in order to give everyone equal opportunity, you have to actually boost the playing field for some individuals. And then inclusion defined as the dynamic state of operating in which diversity is leveraged to create a healthy, a healthy, high performing community. So as we talked about in our previous conversation, the DEI committee in this draft, I have the option of five or seven voting members, and so that's something for the Select Board to discuss and decide. Obviously, you're welcome to choose other numbers other than that as well, but from my conversations with Lynn, based off of, you know, committees and boards that she's worked with, and then also looking at what other communities in Massachusetts have, those seem to be typical numbers that have enough for robust conversation, while maybe are, don't have too many members where it might become unwieldy. The, there's highlighted portions in this that are specifically for the Select Board's review, and I should have highlighted also the, the terms that are defined underneath the numbers of members that will have to be updated depending on when the committee actually kicks off. So then the next paragraph jumps into defining who ideal members of this committee would be. And we, or in this draft, it states that it should not include sitting members of the Select Board, School Committee, Planning Board or Finance Committee. And the purpose of that is to ensure that decision-making authorities already in town. The point is really to encourage new membership and new discussion amongst this, and again, bring in community members that have had less of a say historically. So the policy also specifies that, that the Select Board shall strive to appoint highly qualified and diverse committee members that represent those historically marginalized populations. It goes on to list what some of those populations may be. It's by no means exclusive. And additionally, this is not something that we discuss, so it's for your conversation tonight. I am suggesting in this draft that the committee members should be representative of the diversity of age groups of Long Meadow residents with at least one youth member, 18 years or younger, and one senior member, age 65 or older, if it's a five-person committee. And if it's a seven-person committee, two youth positions and two senior positions. That's my suggestion for your conversation. And it does go, the next paragraph discusses that a requirement for the appointment. Again, the, the purpose of this committee is to have diverse representation, so there's not a lot of requirements for appointment in this draft. However, one requirement is that the individual should express interest in and have a passion for DEI and be able to demonstrate that from their previous, you know, either their previous work experience or their previous life experience. And it goes on to, the document goes on to describe several ways in which that can be And there's also a clause in here that the Select Board, that the DEI committee, if they feel like after their forms that they are lacking expertise in a certain area, they may petition the Select Board to create one or more non-voting members for limited terms. The duties of this advisory committee are enumerated in that section of the document, and I'm not, I won't read them all, but essentially they reflect what we just talked about at our last meeting. So those include gathering firsthand experiences of incidents of racism or aggress, you know, microaggressions or anything like that in Long Meadow itself. And then also the general life experience of underrepresented populations, providing training for their own committee members and perhaps also recommending trainings for other committee members around DEI subjects, facilitating those conversations with the community at large, and identifying ways that Long Meadow's community at large can improve their welcoming nature and inclusion. And then specifically, a few bullet points call out working in conjunction and cooperation with other local or regional communities, and we discussed that at our last, communities or community entities. We discussed that at our last meeting, how it may be that at least at first, we think we cannot find members for this committee that represents certain demographics in Long Meadow, or it may be that we truly don't have sizable populations, but that doesn't mean that we're not part of a larger community in the region, and we can participate on those ongoing efforts to capitalize on that momentum already. And then the very end ends with periodically, no less frequently than once every six months, the DEI committee shall brief the Select Board on progress made and describes the conversation between the Select Board and the DEI committee.
Thank you, Corinne. This is really well done, and I think it's really fleshed out and done a great job on it. My, one question is on the membership, and is that something that a lot of the DEI groups around the state are, use as a, the life experience or the expertise? Is that generally something you've seen in other places?
Some communities don't define what their membership should look like at all. Most of them define that they are specifically looking for a diversity of members that represents the community at large. So, you know, if they're able to point to the census records and say, you know, we have X percent, you know, Hispanic or Latino population, or we have X percent, you know, African-American population, they would like to have as much as possible that amount represented amongst the, the DEI committee membership itself. This goes a little bit further than that by, I think you're referring to a requirement for interest and/or like already having life experience pursuing this. And, and I did purposefully try and have the interest in and like experience in separated because not everybody is going to have professional experience, right, in this. And it doesn't mean that they're not qualified. But that was something that was reflected in both Concord's scope and I believe NADIC's scope. There was another community that also clarified that. And I thought, having seen some of the interviews for other boards and committees with the Select Board, it was very interesting to me to hear how all the different people came to be interested in the boards or committees that they were applying for seats on. And I thought, I, I haven't seen those interviews before, so I'm not sure if these are standard questions, but Mr. Levine, you're, I think you asked almost all of them, if not all of them, why they were interested in the committee? And if they had spoken to anybody else on the committee, obviously applicants wouldn't have that opportunity for a new committee here. But those types of conversations can really help inform how much, and what someone can bring to the table. So let's say the Select Board is blessed to have 10 people apply for five spots, you know? Having that delineated in this charge, I, I felt like would be a boon to help guide decision-making as to who should be appointed.
Sure. I was just worried, I, I don't want us to be in a position of gatekeeping or saying one, one person is more worthy of being on than another, but it is helpful to have some sort of charge on that for us, at least on the appointing. So I'm glad you explained it that way. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, comments that I appreciate also that you've gone through this, Corinne. In terms of the membership, my preference would be that it'd be seven members, but it says members should not include sitting members. I think members should not include any elected official in town, and that goes a little bit beyond who you've listed.
Sure.
I don't think we need to list the Finance Committee. Our, our bylaws prohibit Finance Committee members from participating in any other committee, but you can, you can put that if, if you want to. My concern about saying, you know, two, less than 18 years old or two greater than 65 years old is sometimes we don't have the luxury. And, you know, it's one thing to say it's, it's our preference, but it's another thing to say it's an absolute because we could find ourselves with, you know, as we do on some of our committees, with not, not sufficient representation or, or people on, on the committee, I believe. So to some degree, I'd rather see it be a preference or a, as opposed to, as an absolute requirement. The other thing is, there is no comment in here, and I know we run into some issues about any interactions at all with the school department, school committee, but, you know, that's such a major area of our town, even though they have not endorsed this, this DEI committee, I think we need to somehow acknowledge that there's some relationship or action between the DEI committee, whether it's through the Select Board or however, with, with the schools and the school committee. And finally, you know, I, I found the, that the report we got last year was extraordinarily helpful to me, and where it says periodically and no less frequently than once every six months, DEI should, shall brief the Select Board. It's more important to me that I think we should get an annual written report. And, you know, six months comes and goes real quickly and sometimes we forget that, but I think by, you know, making a written summary, pretty much an obligation, it keeps us on our game here and gets us something that we might not other get, always get. I mean, we've always said we'd love to have every committee come in here and talk to the Select Board and tell us how they're doing, but it just doesn't, doesn't seem to happen. And I, those are, as I read through this, those are the modifications that I saw that I would recommend.
Do you suggest, in regard to your, your comment about the school committee, do you have a way that you envision that working? Do you suggest a liaison or?
Yeah. I mean, just something in the duties, there should have, should be, not should have been, but I, I would love to see a bullet there that says, we'll offer their experience, expertise and observations to the school committee, if nothing less than that. You know, or, or to the school department or, you know, but I think they've got to, we've got to be proactive in making sure that this group offers what they see and do to the school committee. That's all.
It's my understanding that the school committee is working with the superintendent, O'Shea, on this initiative? Is that right? Or something similar?
Something similar.
Certainly coordinate if they can. Tom?
Well, I think we have a bit of a challenge with this because, again, we started this, you know, a few years ago in, in response to George Floyd's murder and, you know, sort of built some momentum from that. But the majority of people who volunteer for boards and committees in the town of Long Meadow are white men and women. And how do we ensure that this committee is not dominated by white men and women? You know, because that's, that's going to be a challenge for us, you know? Because I don't see how it can serve the function that we'd like it to if it isn't, you know, if there isn't a percentage of people of color, that's almost, you know, like, we, we can't budge, you know? Like, how are we gonna do that? And have other towns found this to be a challenge for them?
I agree with your sentiments. I think that is one of the cruxes of the, I'm trying to think of a word to use. I, I think it's a crux of the formation of this DEI committee, and it's part of the reason that this draft policy does go so into detail about what membership could and should look like. I am sure that other communities have faced similar issues and, or one that we expect, you know, similar issues to what we expect to face. We haven't faced it yet. I, at our last conversation, I mentioned that the town of Concord, their Select Board had what they called a robust outreach campaign to solicit membership for their DEI advisory committee. I have not been able to get ahold of their Select Board members or any staff person who can inform me as to what that looked like. But I, I think that that type of strategy is what this Select Board will have to pursue in terms, when, when you are ready to start recruiting for this advisory committee. I don't necessarily have any ideas of what that could look like at this point, but I think it will involve reaching out to community organizations that you know serve diverse members of the community, whether it's, you know, diverse just in a religious institutions or you, maybe you know with some community organizations or some of the educational institutions or things like that that cater to people with, you know, one of the, one of the forms of diversity that this draft makes sure to include is just experiential difference. So it's not even necessarily, we're talking about color of skin or language spoken or religion, but just who has a different, who has had different experiences in life than maybe the majority of the type of people that you referred to who are already serving on many of our boards and committees. And so reaching out to organizations in town and regionally that you already know serve those types of populations and asking if they can help get the word out, making the positions known and available, I think is the first step.
Yeah. So we're gonna have to, recruiting in town because there's, you know, we're gonna have to invite people to be part of this board in order to not have a, you know, have this board end up like all the other boards we have in town.
I think this is something that can get people more passionate about, at least than some.
Well, there's a lot of passionate white people in town.
Well, but we don't have to.
But I don't think we should have a committee that's all white people.
No, I, I agree. I agree with you. But I think it's, this is something that can hopefully get onto the community more and get people, maybe people who care about this more than, you know, buildings or whatever. So, yeah.
If I may, I will just say that I noticed at the last meeting when those interviews were happening that Tim Casey had put in those ads and the, you know, professional bulletins and received, I mean, there were three that I saw just at that one meeting who were responding to ads that he took the initiative to put in various trade bulletins. And so I, I don't know that trade bulletins are necessarily the way that you should go or would go for, maybe for a DEI advisory committee, but putting out simple advertisements seemed to work very well for him. So that maybe that's another place to consider, or another thing to consider.
Yeah. People are passionate about all sorts of things, but I think this is something that can really get, rightfully gets people very fired up in, in town. And so I, there's, I'm worried about it too, but I, I hope we can talk to the right people and get the right people involved. And I, if we can get seven, like Mark was saying, I think the more voices we get to hear from, the better. And I, I think on the charge part at the end, a written report is good, but I think even the tasks or idea, like action items, I think would be really helpful. Concrete things that we can do as a Select Board and the town can do, I think would be great. And I also, I agree with Mark again on, it would be great to, if we could have, tick those boxes on ages, but if we can't, we, that's the nice thing about us, we, we don't have to take, if we do get a lot of people, then we can try to make it as diverse as we want, as can, based on age as well. But if we, if we don't get the application, then, I know some high schoolers who are passionate about this, and I, I know at least one 90-something-year-old in town is very passionate about it as well. So maybe off to a good start on that at least. David, is it?
Yeah, so I, I went to the newly elected officials event for MMA a few weeks ago, and I actually was just looking at my notes. So the town of Sudbury, they recently adopted this as well as Stoughton as well. So those are a couple other towns that we could look at and ask. Then the other point was, I think it was every six months, they would maybe, this group would come in front of the board. I was thinking more on like a quarterly basis, every three months perhaps? Thoughts on, I mean?
It's a big ask if we're asking them to do a report and to gear.
Oh, not a report. I'm just saying, well.
It's almost not, yeah, if they're just coming in, but I, I think having something concrete to do is better, and it's a big ask to do that every three months rather than six. But if we, if we have a Select Board liaison too, we're, we're gonna know what's going on.
Yeah, I think three months, every three months is gonna, is awfully frequent and almost the point of being birdsome. It sounds, sounds good at the beginning, but the problem is, I, I just hate to see us. It sounds, sounds good at the beginning, but the problem is, I, I, I just hate to see us adopt a policy and then ignore it. And that's what I feel would happen. I'd rather, that's why I say adopt a, let, let more, more lenient policy or more relaxed policy and then, you know, beef it up a little bit. We can always do more. So Josh, I'd like to recommend, I think this is great. I'd like to recommend that we just get, make a couple of the suggested changes and come back and vote on it at the next meeting or, I suppose, I mean, we're not going to be pointing them anyway.
No, I agree with you. Any thoughts from five or seven?
I think seven would be better. Are they going to have open meeting law restrictions?
You bet.
Yeah. So when you have five, if you talk to two people, you're violated. So seven would make it a little bit easier, especially because it's a group that's forming and they're going to want to talk to other members of the group. So at least they could talk to one, maybe two people without a violation.
Okay. Dan?
I would love it if we had twenty people, but, you know, we see some of the committees in town and it's difficult just to get even a few people for a committee. So I, I thought five might be better, but if we could do seven, I would prefer that we had more people.
Okay.
If, if we set this, the group is the size of seven, the, the quorum becomes four, which, you know, sometimes might be a challenge, but I, so I understand your point, Dan. But, you know, I, I, I think, the point of this is inclusion. And so we should include as many as we can and see how, you know, see how many people sign up. I think if, you know, we put out a call for members and three people sign up, I think we're going to get the message. I, I hope it's not going to happen.
How many were on the task force?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Yeah, I, hopefully, we can, I have contacts that I hope will, will get involved. And, yeah, I, I think we can do seven. And it's worth a shot. But I, I feel pretty confident that people will be interested in, in doing this and helping the town. And I, and I hope they do. All right. So we'll see you, see you next time.
Great.
And I think you're up next as well, oh, no, I'm sorry, first on new business. Level-two significant drought status update. Actually says draft status update.
Yeah.
Oh, does it?
So moving into the meeting, we have the DPW director, Sean Van Dusen, and the water superintendent, Mike Spear. They're joining tonight because for several meetings now, we've been having you issue announcements regarding our drought status and we are slowly tracking it across the state. It's elevating, out east it's now a level three, which has a whole different set of restrictions that come along with it. Unfortunately, we have no precipitation in the near for, future. Even looking out the next ten days, we're not looking to see any significant improvement. So I've asked them to come here tonight to talk about where we are right now and where we may potentially need to be heading, so that you guys are fully informed and then the general public is aware of what's happening as well. And there was something else I was just thinking I was going to say to you, but now I've lost that.
Can you just reiterate Michael's?
Uh, Michael, Michael Spear is the water superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I know what I was going to say. This issue has risen up to our emergency management level. So we are now meeting biweekly between myself, DPW staff, and the emergency management team at the fire department to just talk about where we are, some projections looking forward, some, you know, things that maybe transpired over the days that preceded our last meeting. The, also why this is really important and reaches an emergency management level is it has implications on our ability to fight fires. And so that's really what is one of the more concerning things. If we are unable to have the water tower gain its water capacity back, we will have an issue with, if we have a big fire in town, being able to fight that. But I could have Sean and Mike speak to that in much more depth than, than I have.
I'll let Mike go and then I'll follow afterwards.
So Mike, if you could just tell us, like, kind of where we are and a little bit on how our system operates, and then we could talk later about where we're heading.
All right. So just, just to give you an example, the, our modifier, our tank was at full level, which was thirty-two feet. And we had both booster pumps helping to keep the tank at that level. And with the amount of flow that the fire chief was putting out, it was pumping like four thousand down a minute each truck. So we were lucky to have the, the two booster pumps to keep the tank full. So with, with that being said, the tank dropped below ten feet last week and we had both booster pumps pumping and we weren't getting any water. So that's telling, telling you how much water is being used during the mornings with both booster pumps running and our tank not filling.
So if we had another major fire like Armadas, would we not be able to, would we be able to keep up the pressure for the fire department?
If the tank was at low, correct.
Mark?
Michael, this is Mark Cole. Just a couple of questions because I, I just want to clarify some things I've heard in the past that may or may not be true. One is that, that the tank was, I, I'd heard was originally installed to boost the pressure on the south end of town during the day, but that water pressure on the north end of town was essentially maintained out of the Springfield system? Is that a fair statement?
No. The, the tank, we, our, our system basically runs off the tank. It, it travels from twenty-five feet to thirty-two feet all day long.
You mean the, the level of the tank?
Correct.
And, and so the, the, the notion that the tank got filled overnight and ran down most of the day and then filled up overnight? Is that a, a fair understanding of the process as it should be? Or is it revoked it was?
During, during a normal operation day without irrigation, the water tank travels from twenty-five feet to thirty-two feet, I'd say probably at least ten, twelve times a day. It goes up and down.
Okay. But, but do we generally use the, the Forrest Glen booster pumps? Because I remember a year ago when we talked about capital for that, I was told we rarely use those booster pumps except occasionally in the summertime. Is that not a fair statement?
Correct. Correct. Those, those booster pumps are just because of demand for irrigation. From, from, say, end of September to May, those pumps don't run.
Thank you.
Now, at one point, when the DPW was being put in, we had water from Springfield going to DPW. Is that still the case?
No.
DPW ties into ours, yeah. So I guess the other thing would be that if, yeah?
Springfield water for the new DPW?
Yeah.
Are you asking about?
Well, at one point it was going to DPW, but I guess that's changed. Is, is that right?
Springfield water has, has that fire suppression.
All right. So if we had a fire, could our trucks fill up in Springfield?
Oh, I'm sure.
That means a lot of time out.
Each, each, each round in town has, has, you know, held a hand for, for a fire.
We have a cross connection on the Enfield, we have indeed, but it's not generally open. Mike, I just want to confirm, you said that, that the fire suppression system at the new DPW is fed through the Springfield municipal water supply system and not the Long Meadow water supply system?
Correct. Correct.
Why, why do we have two water supply systems going to the DPW building?
Because when, when the design for the building was done, they did a flow test from our line and it wasn't enough to handle the fire suppression unless we spent extra money for a booster pump.
That's why we, yeah, we needed it to both.
So, hey, can I interject for one second?
Please.
Sean, sorry. Do you guys hear me? Sean?
Yeah, go ahead, Sean. We, we can see your name getting highlighted on Zoom.
I just wanted to follow up what Mike was saying with a bit of a tech question. This last month, we've been exceeding our maximum allowable water from Springfield by over a million gallons a day. So contractually, we're, we're in violation and that's something that we do try to, by the way, to address.
Well, we don't have a bylaw. So what happens if we get to level three?
According to the state, it's not essential watering unless.
Does the state enforce that?
Both of us don't enforce that.
Right. And we don't really have, well, so what do we do?
So Mike, is it, this is when we do the emergency declaration, level three?
Yes. We could do an emergency declaration with MassDDP. I talked to them last week about a emergency declaration for water supply. If the town wishes to implement this declaration, all we need to do is send an email to MassDDP specifying what our needs and what we would like.
So the select board would, would send that request to DEP that we enact the emergency declaration, which then triggers enforcement capabilities?
Why, why is it us? If it's an emergency, we got to wait two weeks?
The Water Service Commission app? I think it's possible the DPW could, we've explored a little bit, if emergency management could really hit that threshold, which is partly why we're here tonight to brief you on what's happening, so that we're not coming to you when it is an absolute emergency.
What?
Couple of things. One is that, what I'm hearing is that the Long Meadow, and I'm going to get away a little bit from the irrigation and all that kind of stuff, but Long Meadow's use of water seems to have outgrown our system's capacity. That's what I'm hearing. You know, it, it, nobody in here said, "There's a shortage of Springfield water." Yes, Sean, I heard you say, "We're exceeding our purchase agreement" or whatever it is from Springfield by a million gallons a day. And I understand that and that's not acceptable, but that, that doesn't mean that, you know, nobody's saying that the reservoir is empty. Now, that, this is different from what may be coming down because of a, a drought situation. But right now, what I'm hearing is the situation is that we have a capacity and a systems problem, that we can't keep up with demand. And it may only be quote-unquote "summertime" and due to sprinkler systems, which we believe. But it could just be due to growth. I mean, we're literally using the same distribution, same pumps, same everything, same water tower that we used thirty-five years ago. And, and, you know, that concerns me that we're, you know, we don't and haven't invested in a system that gives us better capacity to meet the needs of the town. Now, having said that, we do need to address, in my opinion, the use of water for irrigation that may not be, you know, necessary during drought conditions. But to me, that's a totally different approach from, you know, we can't maintain our, the level that we need for fire protection of town in our water tank. I mean, if, if it's going down during the day, you know, most people are watering during the morning. I, that, that concerns me. And, and that's why I go back to when we talked about, you know, how the pumps ran and the, the Forrest Glen system ran previously. It sounds like, you know, we haven't updated that system at all. I don't know if I'm missing a point here, but, you know, it's a, it's a bigger issue to me. Yes, we need to address the, the issue of drought, but we also need to address the, the issue of, we don't have capacity in the town.
Mark, you, you're, you're correct. It is, it's two issues. And it's one that, regarding the capital needs of our water system, it's one that Sean and Mike and I have been talking about, a growing concern over the last, I don't know, Sean's only been here a couple of months, but it's rising to the level of really needing to take a deep dive and make some serious investments in our system in, in meeting the capital needs of it, which we have not been keeping pace with. So I think you'll see some of that reflected ideally in the next capital plan. But it may be a bigger price tag than we are actually able to handle. So I do anticipate there'll be more on that in the near future. I'm not ready to go into much more detail on that yet. I don't blame Sean as either, but it is something you're talking about. And you're right, it is two issues.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm more than happy to defer that issue. Just one other comment, I know Tom wanted to say something too. But, you know, several weeks ago, we all, I think the whole town got a, a robo-call system saying, "We're getting into a drought situation. Please water, you know, voluntarily water your lawns if those people have automatic sprinkler systems. Odd side, odd days, even side, even days." You know, I, I got a lot of emails from that. I got emails from people saying, "I was driving down my street and there are people watering, you know, whether it's five o'clock or six o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon. There are people on the wrong side of the street watering their lawn." But I also got feedback from people who said, "You know, I have an automatic sprinkler system and the system lets me pick Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. It doesn't pick odd days and even days. I set it to Tuesday, Thursdays, and Saturdays and I'm doing it every other day, but I'm in, you know, in compliance every other week and I'm out of compliance every other week." And if we really want to approach the people with automatic sprinklers who have systems and make it easier for them to be in compliance, I'd like to suggest we can give some consideration to this, you know, idea of, you know, odd side of the street, do it Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and even sides, Tuesday, Thursday, something that people can set because my sense is that, you know, there, there may be fines, but we're going to end up being water police on something we don't need to be if we can make the system something that people can be in compliance with. And, and I think that's just an observation that folks in our water department ought to take, take into account because otherwise we're just going to be, you know, either forcing people to go, readjust their sprinkler system every week, which I don't think is going to happen, or we're going to be adapting people not in compliance.
Yeah. Mike, I was just wondering if you think we're at a point where we should tell people they can only water their grass three times a, a week?
Well, we, we can ask them, but how can we enforce it without, without a bylaw?
Right. Because when we get, if we get to level three, we would have to, we would go to what level? What would be the ask at level three?
To be there on emergency. And that we are, that, if we can clear on emergency, that would be our ticket to enforcement.
Who would, who would do the enforcement?
The police.
That's, yes, that's another question.
Right. We don't, our goal is to not get to that. I don't think anybody wants to get to that because when we get to level three, that also means all town irrigation is shut off, which is not something we want to do, especially at Wolf Swamp Field where we just made a massive investment in that, at large, so.
Good point. Very good point.
Well, Lynn, like I said, I, I, I think the first thing we've got to do is, is make us, put together a voluntary system that people can be in compliance with. Because the current system, frankly, from what I've heard, people are just saying, you know, it, it's just too burdensome to try to be in compliance with odd side, odd days and inside, even days, given the fact that my system lets me set up. You know, and I, and I really don't care what it is. It could be. don't care what it is, it could be, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday or Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, or anybody who wants to go outside and water on, with a hose on Sunday, whatever we, the DP, the water department wants to do, I think they should, they can do, but I think it needs to be something that's, that's achievable by most people who have an automated sprinkler system. And the, and the current system flat out isn't.
So I, yeah, I, I just wanted to put a pin on that for, that's not the right term, but to understand, and Mark is our water expert and brought it up. So is the low tank level completely unrelated to the drought? It's just too many people are watering? Or is it?
But they're probably watering because of the drought.
Well, I suppose, yeah. But we can, we can fill up the tank, there's not water to fill up the tank, it's just a matter of, yeah, go ahead.
In, in these bi-weekly meetings that we've been having, Chief Dearborn, our Emergency Management Director, has made the point that in years past, and, and Mike Spear might be able to corroborate this as well, in years past, when we have had this issue, it's during times of drought, so people are watering more because there is drought, whereas during a plentiful rain, our past normal was no longer a normal, when there was an inch of rain every week in most, you know, weeks in the summer, they wouldn't have to irrigate as much, but now in order to keep their lawns green, they're having to irrigate more than they would normally be irrigating. So it's, it's not directly the drought that is reducing the water levels in the, in the water tower, it's not, it's not reduced levels of sprinkled water and sewer that are not able to fill up our water tower, but it's the, the drought that's making people water more, that's drawing too much on the water tower. So they, they are two separate issues, but interrelated issues.
Just as a side, if, if history is a precursor, what we're gonna find is our sewer retained earnings fund or our sewer enterprise fund is gonna be well-funded this year, that people are doing a lot of watering because the sewer, they're paying for water, paying for sewer, whether they get it or not. But the point is, I understand Corinne what you're saying and I think, you know, we need to come out, somehow address that. I think, I'm, I'm a little correct here, but we make, you know, less frequent watering manageable by people, we will get people to water less frequently.
And you're supposed to water every other day anyway, that's what I'm understanding. People shouldn't be running, sprinklers every, yeah, that's.
And we can also say, put a limit of an hour a day per household or something like that, I mean, it's, it's a law. Whatever we wanna do, let's set it, but, but do something that's, that's manageable, you know?
The one day, yeah, doing it by days of the week, I think that totally makes sense. I mean, a sprinkler system, if that's how it works, then I think let people, give them something achievable, which is reasonable.
Or we can have no watering in certain times of the day, you know, we can certainly do that if, if we, you know, and you can't tell you what time the fire's gonna break out, but if we look at the, the history of our, of the level of our water tower and then, you know, it always seems to be down at a certain time, let's shift the watering so that that doesn't happen. You know, we're, we're do it by section of town, saying, this section of town has to water from five to six AM and this section of town from six to seven, or whatever it is, so that we, you know, because what sounds like it's happening is that, I don't know what time, six AM, everybody's sprinkler comes on every day and, and that's what's killing us, I think, that's what's hurting us. So we, we ought to look at the usage, look at the pattern. You know, I have no problem saying, you know, we got five precincts in town, people know where they live, and we just say, you can't water between five and six AM because we can't keep up with it, or whatever the issue is for precincts. But we've gotta get a, a system that, you know, maintains the safe, the safe level of water in our tank and, and just crossing our fingers and sending out a robo-call saying, please don't water so much, I'm not gonna do it.
I think just education-wise, getting it out there that we may have a fire suppression issue is, that's a big one. I mean, our, that, that fire, it's fresh in people's minds and, you know, we don't want to see anything like that again, just so that we can't control. So if we can work that in and have people understand what the consequences are beyond just it's the right thing to do, I think we should do that.
What is the fine, or we have to establish a, a fine? I'm just, I know we've lacked enforcement, generally speaking, right across a lot of issues, but for the water issue, what is that fine?
Mike, is that, right, it wouldn't be a local fine, so it would have to be something that DEP gave guidance on. Mike, do you happen to know?
No, I think there's like a, a general census of like a twenty-five dollars the first fine and fifty dollars thereafter.
I mean, Dan, if you may not recall, but in the last town meeting, the proposed article that was withdrawn, literally had the enforcement of, we go around with, because you're required to have an automatic shut-off, shut off your water on the outside and put a lock on it. So the fine wasn't a fine, the fine was stop water, you know, but that didn't pass, it wasn't even proposed. That was part of a different system, that was one that said we were gonna prohibit if people were, were using irrigation during prohibited times. That was in theory, one of those proposed allowable solutions.
So will fine go to the state?
Can I speak to that? So in our, in our proposed bylaw, that's.
I'm not asking about that, I'm asking about if we went in groups. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I'll speak to what Mr. Gold was just saying, that I just wanna clarify just because of the ongoing conversation that may exist in Elvis Water Conservation bylaw, that the, the, the external shut-off for the water irrigation systems, that would happen if they were repeated, ignored fines. It, it wasn't the first step, so just to make sure everybody who's watching this knows that.
But, but again, I mean, it, the immediate problem, I think, can be, I, I would like to think, I hope, could be resolved through distributing the time of day, distributing the days of the week, you know, in a better defined system so that, you know, we don't run into this, this situation of if there's a fire, we don't have enough water. I mean, that to me is just untenable and, and something we cannot stand for, you know, but it doesn't mean we gotta tell everybody, you know, right now there's no water because there's not a lot of water, but there's still some water. And like you said, I, I think the town wants to deal with water, so.
So would you like us to bring you back some recommended language on what that schedule should be, or are you willing to give us that directive now? And then we would prepare something. We've talked about doing a direct mailing to households, you've probably seen the message boards that we've put out, we've got social media that's happening twice a week and we did do that, we'll call it when we hit level two drought status.
I, I don't wanna wait two weeks, so if we can craft together, and this might speak more about my friends than the town, but I, they don't know what precinct they live in. I get that question a lot, so I.
When they go to, oh, don't they know what line they're in? Go ahead, I get it.
If they're with the boat.
Precinct D, heavy wire users.
No offense to anybody, my friends watching. So I, I think if we could sit with the even and outside, everyone knows their house address and the days of the week, I, I think that's the way to do it.
You know, I'd like to think so, Josh, but from what I'm hearing, maybe that, that's not, I, I'm more than willing, because this is all voluntary, to, to, you know, delegate this to the experts in our water, you know, professionals in our water department. When it comes, goes beyond voluntary, I think, you know, the buck's gotta stop with the elected officials, but while it's still voluntary, I have no problem having our water department come up with and, and go out to the town with a, with recommended language for voluntary watering restrictions. My, like I said, my only concern is that it be something that's, that's implementable. I'm more than happy to go to the folks who complain to me and see if they think that, that whatever is proposed is, is implementable.
I, I also think we should do door tags, that every resident should get something on their door, remind them what, what their watering recommendations are so they can try to adhere to them. You know, the robo-calls are nice, but I think that people need to see it and be reminded, oh yeah, it's a Wednesday, I can't long to.
Town, I think door, door tags are, are a burden on the town that's better overcome by a mailing.
Well, I do agree. I don't think it's a burden, I think people.
Who's gonna, who's gonna go door to door to 5,200 houses and put some on it?
Somebody's gonna have to, someone's gonna have to, yeah. We'll look for volunteers, but yeah, people will volunteer, you know, and, and, you know, I saw a guy volunteering, he's just walking around, yeah, there's people volunteer for that. People who care, but I, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, we could try and get something in the reminder, most people get the reminder, but not all people get the reminder. You know, we could do a supplement to that, but, but that isn't, you know, I, I just, you know, when you get a tag on your door, you know, this is, something's going on.
I know Sarah's watching right now, so if we can get a reminder, this, you know, phone in place and next week.
But we don't know what to tell people yet, so.
We'll work on language.
I mean, does anybody, you know, I said that I, I'm more than happy to delegate professionals, but we need other people.
Well, we have the water department here and you can.
I was just gonna suggest, maybe Mike and his team could come back to us in a week, whether it's over email and talk to Lynn and help us craft something for the next meeting, based on their expertise of saying, you know, at six AM, we're really low at, you know what Mark was saying earlier, maybe at certain parts of town that we could delegate these types of.
Let's ask Michael. Michael, do you have a, I mean, do you think we need to get more specific or do you have any ideas now or do you wanna, do you wanna come back and give us an idea in a couple weeks?
I'd like to come back with what I would like to be said on, whether it could be a door tag or a mailing.
All right, that's, that's fine by me. Goodbye to everyone else. All right.
It's great by me, I, I, but I, as you said, that means we're gonna do nothing for a couple weeks.
Yeah, that's the biggest concern right there.
And we might wanna do something before then, so.
Well, we can't have it both ways.
Right, well, that's why, you know, that's why I put out the argument that said, this is a voluntary action. Nobody asked us before the robo-call went out, at least I didn't get asked, I assume, we, none of us got asked the robo-call out because it was voluntary and it was the right thing to do. Well, same with this, it's a voluntary system, we come up with something a little better, just send it out, I don't, no.
And the other thing is that this could be predicted, a prediction of what's gonna happen next year. I mean, every year we have those two, maybe three weeks in July that are really hot and people are worried about their grass burning up and maybe we should be sending out things, you know, in June. And so they say, look, July's coming, this is our plan during July, we had a problem last year, we're probably gonna have a problem this year. So prevention is always, you know, getting ahead of time, because you're right, by the time we get something out, the heat wave will be over, people will say, oh, you know, my grass is looking okay, I'm not gonna have to water as much.
I, I, you know, you have to take that a step further, I think you sent something out that said, hey, if you're setting up your sprinkler system for the, your irrigation system for the, for the summer, next summer, or whatever it is, you're a precinct day, you ought to be, you know, we'd like you to do this, you're a precinct B, and, because if we, if we either do it by precinct or by time of day or by day of the week or whatever it is, you know, we may, you know, my hope is that we wouldn't find ourselves with, with insufficient water in the water tank.
Okay, I'd just like to ask Michael, what do you think about that? If we had some kind of program where every June, we prepared people for the July heat and give them a prescribed watering approach?
Yeah, I like that idea of, of what Mr. Gold had about, you know, doing by precinct, there are five precincts there?
Yeah.
Do you agree?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that'd be helpful.
Tom, to your point, that is, education and messaging is something we're talking about and it's something we're also building into a lot of our planning. If you remember, a few weeks ago, Corinne was here talking about the MVP application for our long-range plan that's going to have a climate lens, resiliency lens, and that speaks directly to this, is we know that we're, the situation of drought is something we're just gonna be living with and probably worsening over the, you know, our, our lifetime. And we're taking that into consideration now with all of our public messaging, our planning, our, just our strategy with how we're going to continue to exist. So, to, to your point, I think messaging's gonna be just part of our everyday life and in how we need to treat our, our precious resources. And certainly we could be in this situation even as we hit June 1st, if we have a, if we have little to no precipitation over the winter and we've gone into a fall season with almost no precipitation either, and as soon as we hit May 1st, we could be in a situation where we don't have enough water.
Or we find ourselves like Kentucky and nobody's watering at all. I mean, you know, climate change is, can go either way. Right now, we're in a drought situation, but the plan for this country, they're too much water.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask, Michael, did, did we have a similar situations with the water tower last year, the year before? That you know of?
No, no, because last year we had, the issue was 2019, I believe.
If you look at water usage, 2019 is probably high risk, you're. Yeah, and give some thought now, just went to that, spreading, spreading out the use of the.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll map something out, we'll get some language drafted, if you're willing to let me run with it.
Oh, sure, yeah, I think, I don't wanna wait, I might as well get on it now. And I, I think you did a good job with the robo-call and with more voices involved and I could throw it on the job.
Great, and hopefully we won't be back on August 15th.
And 30.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have EV charging station fee and draft policy. And I believe that's you again, Corinne.
Yes, so this was another memo that I drafted that goes into some detail to justify the recommendations that come at the end of the memo, and then there's a draft policy attached to the memo that has both recommendations highlighted for your discussion. So I'll, again, I will just very briefly go over the different sections of the memo and summarize what's in them. So as a reminder, and as Mr. Lucusa pointed out at the, at an earlier portion of tonight's meeting, we already have some electric vehicle charging stations installed in town. There's a dual-port pedestal, just to explain some language here, dual-port pedestal means one charging station, two plugs for charging cars, so two cars can charge simultaneously. So a dual-port pedestal, and then the new adult center has two, two adults, uh, sorry, two dual-port pedestals. So we have a total of six ports or six charging plugs right now. We also have two additional grants awarded to fund four more ports total, and then we have our eyes on a third that would fund two more ports. So all of this to say that we have in our sites either already installed or planned for 14 ports, I believe that totals four. So that number is, just factors into the tedious math that happens in the rest of this memo. So the, the remainder of the memo goes into different methodologies for determining how much to charge when charging for a, at a EV charging station, and then different methodologies for charging at a EV charging station. So the first section here goes into the costs associated with EV charging stations, the first one being energy, of course. Because we are an ever-source community, we only have one rate plan that we, all of our electricity is billed under, and electricity itself is about 25 cents per kilowatt hour under that rate plan, but there's various different usage rates that trigger other charges, so it's not always just 25 cents, and it can be as high as 63 cents when we factor in all of the additional charges. So that's 63 cents per kilowatt hour, and according to my conversations with our ever-source representative, we can expect a good portion, if not all, of our charging kilowatts to be charged at the demand rate charge of 63 cents per kilowatt hour. So that's a baseline charge to the community, 63 cents per kilowatt hour. That, I, I'm not gonna go into all the math with you, but that's important just as our baseline, just to remember that if we charge anything less than 63 cents, we're automatically losing money on the electricity alone. If we charge anything more than 63 cents per kilowatt hour, that's when we could start that's when we could start to make some money back, and if we charge 63 cents per kilowatt hour, that's where our break-even point, again, just on the electricity, not on anything else. So the remainder of that section does go into what the other costs associated with EV charging stations could be, so of course, there's the electricity, which we just talked about, which is what's actually being sold at an EV charging station, but we also have potentially transaction fees, um, which would be incurred if we use a payment processor such as Stripe. Um, there could, there are the unit costs, um, there are, uh, which is the, the actual machinery itself that we purchase, um, or the hardware. There's the network cost, uh, which is, um, how much we pay to run and connect to the JuiceNet, which is our provider, um, enter, uh, software and their system. There's the installation cost, so that's the labor of installing that, uh, hardware, operation and maintenance, which is part of our contract. And then other miscellaneous costs, which include, uh, one-time fees, such as like the shipping for the material, um, painting and marketing, uh, planning and development on, on, um, behalf of our provider, um, the router, et cetera. So, the remaining part of that section talks about the total site cost per port, that does not include the electricity, that is only the hard costs that I just mentioned, does not include any staff time, um, for whoever's going to be managing this, uh, this program that we have running, et cetera. So what it comes down to is that each, each port, so again, that's just the one place that one car plugs in, it's not the station itself, costs us about $4,500 per year, or about $2.50 per day. So, the next session gets into, uh, section gets into the rate-setting methodologies, and essentially there are three. The first is that we decide not to charge, and there's reasons to do that. The second is a session fee, which means we charge per increment of time, as opposed to per kilowatt hour. The reasons we might be interested in doing that is that it's easy for a consumer to understand, oh, okay, if I'm plugged in for an hour, it'll cost me this amount. If I'm plugged in for a half an hour, it'll cost me this amount, as opposed to having to try and figure out how many kilowatts their vehicle can charge within that hour, and that's that third, uh, methodology there, which is the per-kilowatt fee. So the session fee and the per-kilowatt fee should come out pretty equally to the consumer, no matter what, which methodology, uh, the town decides to move forward with. But they would just be sort of advertised in a different, in a different way.
Corinne, can you just stop there?
Yeah.
Why and how is the session fee and a per-kilowatt fee the same unless we know that the charging rate is X number of kilowatts per hour, and therefore, is that, is that what we know, the charging rate?
They're, they're about the same, those two, they're, they're not going to be exactly the same, because every vehicle, every model of vehicle is going to have a different way, uh, rate at which the car can charge. So some, like, I, I believe the hybrids, the EV hybrids, charge more slowly than the fully-electric vehicles. So if they plug in for an hour, and we have a session fee, um, it is true that they will be charged more per kilowatt hour than a car that's able to charge faster. That being said, when I have talked to other municipalities and, uh, utility, um, uh, professionals, I, I have often heard that the session fees is more attractive to consumers despite that fact, just because they can understand what the unit is.
So, so let me, I, I, my question obviously wasn't clear enough, okay? I got a car, I'm gonna go plug it in, and I can either charge it $2 for the hour, or, or 40 cents a kilowatt hour. I need to know how many kilowatt hours I'm gonna use per hour to find out which one's cheaper, right? Similarly, we're selling, so, you know, do most char, cars charge at a rate of 1 kilowatt per hour, or 4 kilowatts per hour? So that 25 cents equals a dollar an hour, or 25 cents equals $2, do we know that? And we, I know that every car is different, but there's gotta be some distribution around the center.
So, so to the first part of your question, um, we, we would decide, that you would decide, if we are going to charge per session or per kilowatt, so the consumer's not gonna have that option.
I understand that, but for me to set the rate, I need to understand what's better.
So then on page three, there's that rate-setting methodologies section, and that's where I come, that's where I tell you, these are, these are my assumptions, so.
But nowhere in there does it say the, the kilowatts per hour.
Yeah, so the second bullet point, each charging vehicle has a 64 kilowatt per hour batter, or kilowatt hour battery, so.
But kilowatt hour battery doesn't mean it's, it's charging 64 kilowatts in an hour.
No, it's, that's in the, the next part, sorry, go on.
The next bullet point says, uh, we know that customers tend to use public level-two charging stations to top off their tanks rather than recharge completely. That, that's because of how quickly they can charge. So, most level-two, or level-two chargers can fill most EVs from empty in an average of 4.5 hours. So if we say a consumer is topping off a battery at 60%, they would likely need a two-hour charge to get a 40% to bring you back up to 100. If their, if their battery is already at 80 and they're charging, so it's about 20% per hour, so 20% of the 64 kilowatts is 12.8, which is in that, uh, parentheses there. So I'm assuming a 12.8 kilowatt per hour charge.
Okay, so that's the number, 12.8 kilowatts?
Yeah, and it's an assumption, right, like, as you said, they're, they're all different, so we just have to.
It's actually kilowatt-hours per hour.
Yes, kilowatt-hours per hour, so that, I, that's why this memo is so long, is because there have to be a lot of assumptions, so that we're talking about apples to apples, because every vehicle is different, um, and also every utility is different, so their rate plans are all different, et cetera. So it, this is a roundabout, uh, discussion, but, um, the math is all there.
Good, thank you.
I'm not saying this is a good idea, just for information, can we, could we charge different rates for residents versus the people driving into town or passing through?
I do not know how you would, I don't know if that's possible to be set up with the software, and I don't know, like, maybe one way that could happen is if they scan their driver's license, but I don't think the, I, I think it's more of like a software issue, I don't know that.
I didn't know that if the, uh, I forgot the, the, uh, name of the company you said.
JuiceNet.
JuiceNet, like, if they can, if you have to register with them and you put your address.
Well, if you had people punch in their zip code, you know.
They'd probably get it wrong.
Everyone who knows your name, but outzowners would be kinda stuck, you know.
I, I don't know what the answer is, I didn't come across that at all in my research. I don't know that it's the same, when you, when you look at like Valley Bike Share or something like that, you have to create an account to you, to pay for using a bike, and so the software itself knows who you are every time you're gonna go, I, I think this is more of a, um, more of just like a point of sales, where it's like you just put your credit card in and it doesn't really know anything about you, I, I, that is what I believe, but I, again, I haven't thought about that before.
Like I said, I don't know if it's a good idea, it's just something.
And Corinne, these would be, um, once they're on the system, people who are driving their cars, they can see it on their car computer, there's one in Long Meadow, and they can find it, right? You know, so you would think that certain locations, like the ones on Long Meadow Street, people would get off the highway, use those, and keep going. And so we may wanna consider having different rates for different locations, you know, in terms of that. You know, the, my business side of me says we, we can't lose money on these, I mean, we could, you know, we could start with breaking even, but, you know, we just, I don't think we should, we should actually lose money, um, and I really appreciate the research you did in looking at other towns, and it was interesting to see how towns who had set the rate too high, you know, as soon as they, or they set it low, and then they, when it was good, then they, all of a sudden, people stopped using it, so I think we wanna be, uh, as fair as possible, but, um, you know, I appreciate all your work, this is, it really helps me feel prepared to discuss this a little bit, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, so I've been doing a little calculating here, Corinne, so tell me where I, where I screwed up, because this isn't, okay? If, if in fact, we're gonna use your 12.8 kilowatt-hours per hour, that's what, that's how much energy flows through those chargers, right? And we're gonna be charged 63 cents per kilowatt hour. That's $8.06 the town's gonna get charged for the electricity.
Yes.
So based on what you just said, Tom, we'd have to charge $8.06 per hour to break even.
Yes.
Okay, well, what can you get for an hour for $8?
Well, I'm, I'm, and frankly.
It is cheaper than, it's cheaper than gas.
Oh, yeah, it's, and I, I'll attest to the fact, and I'm, I don't have an electric car, but my son does, and he tells me all the time, it's, pays six bucks, and he tops it off, and he says, and his wife's paying $75 for the same amount of gas, so, you know, it, it, it makes a lot of sense, but I just wanna know that, that we're talking about, well, do we charge, you know, 20 cents, 25 cents a kilowatt hour, or $2 a session? Those don't even come close to covering our costs, our costs are 63 cents a kilowatt hour, or about $8 an hour, and that, that $8 is, frankly, it's based on the average of what a car will take up, because, you know, if, if a car has a 60, you know, I'm gonna go back to, if a car has a 64 kilowatt-hour battery, and they can go from 0 to 100% in four and a half hours, that's an average of 14.2 kilowatt-hours per hour. Which is far more than 12.8, and that's $10 an hour, at 63 cents.
So you're saying like a minimum would be $8 for a full hour, or $4 for a half hour?
I'm telling you, that's, that's our cost.
Yep, and that's all, it's all, the math is all laid out on page five there, in, in the bolded section, so I would just add to what you said, Mr. Gold, that that only covers the electricity, it does not cover the, um, cost that I was detailing previously, which includes all of the hard costs. So it, it would actually be about $20 if we wanted to recover those costs, per hour.
So I'm, I'm gonna take your comments at the end that said, look, we, we adopted our green community, we're trying to encourage people to do this, we got grants for most of the money that we put into this thing, you know, so, you know, I, I, I get the need to recover the capital costs, but I'm more than willing to say, we don't need to recover the capital costs, what we need to recover is the operating cost. The problem's gonna be, when some point down the road, something happens, whether it breaks or it stops working, and to me, that's the number-one argument why the town of Long Meadow should not be in the business of doing anything other than selling, leasing land to somebody who wants to run this business. You know, we're not a municipal electric company, we're not a, you know, we don't do well doing it, somebody's gonna have to administer it, taking care of these things, we're gonna, it's gonna cost us a lot of money somewhere down the road to maintain these things, because we own them, you know, and, and so I'm more than happy to say, let's, let's run them as we can for, you know, for what it costs us, I think we do it as a six-month or nine-month or some kind of pilot, and see what it's actually costing us to run, you know, are we really getting charged 63 cents a kilowatt hour, or are we getting charged at the lower rate? And I hate to say this, but we've been talking about ever-source and some of our other things, my sense is they're gonna look at electric car charging, and you said in here, they're going after a separate tariff, people at home, that means they're looking at a separate rate for charging for electric cars. I gotta believe it's not gonna be the same rate as the, as to run my electric lights in my house, it's gonna be a much higher rate for charging cars, I would believe. So, you know, this 63 cents may be today's price, but it may not be next year's price for charging cars, so I, I'm more than happy to set a, you know, my support, my personal opinion is, set a fixed rate per hour that also gets people in and out, so we don't have to worry about the person who goes there and parks all day, because I'm just trickle-charging in and out, now we become parking police too, because somebody wants to move a car out of there, and that's a real problem also.
Corinne, the other, uh, examples from the area, are those on National Grid, on the different tariff rate that National Grid has?
Some of them are, uh, some of them are ever-source, like Springfield is ever-source, but North Hampton is National Grid, right, Lynn?
Yeah.
Um, Holyoke is HG&E, uh, they have their own utility, East Hampton, I believe, is also ever-source. And Agawam is also ever-source, Agawam is also ever-source, I think. Um, and you'll see that Agawam, you know, they're at six, they charge 60 cents per kilowatt hour, which is right about where we would be, and you saw, um, former chairman Strange's quotation in this, which is that nobody uses them, so, um, and, and I will say, I, I don't, I mean, and I cannot speak for all electric vehicle owners, but there's another side to this, which is not only what, what will people pay for because of what the current market is, but they all have chargers at home, so who, who is going to be using Long Meadow's chargers, and is it worth it to them to pay for electricity at all when they can be charged, because they have a wider range of electric use at their home, to Mr. Gold's point earlier, that they are not gonna be charged the demand charges at home for their electric vehicle charging, they will be charged a much lower rate than 63 cents. So, is it worth it if they can just go home and plug in their garage, they might take longer, it might take 24 hours for their car to charge there, it might not, they might have paid to upgrade to a level-two charger, and they have the same infrastructure we do. So then, then will we only be getting people from the highway who are coming?
Well, a lot of these places, people may park there, and then there's something to do, you go shopping in North Hampton, you walk around East Hampton.
Soccer games, you know.
Yeah, well, we, we got, there's nothing on.
Is it the DPW?
I've heard a lot about this.
That's why we, we, we don't have a lot of places for people to do stuff, but that's why we directed our specific locations at places where people could be for a bit, like the adult center, Wolf Swamp Fields, you'd be watching a game, the high school, you know, you're either walking the track maybe, or you're actually attending school, working here. DPW, hopefully in the future, in the near future, one of our fleet cars will be an electric car.
So the, the intention here is not to fix our budget with this, it's, but we, yeah, we're not gonna lose money on it, so.
Yeah, the select board has to decide, like, what are the goals, and if the goals are to have them for, you know, the sake of, we're a green community, this is something we wanna promote, therefore it's worth it to us to subsidize it at 25 cents, or, or whatever rate, or to make it totally free, although we don't have those commercial areas that you were speaking to, that, the free ones traditionally are in, or is the goal here that we wanna make them available, because it's the right thing to do, but it, it can't be costing the town $16,000 a year, once they're all installed, and, um, the, you know, that's not something I can answer, but the, my two recommendations, the town is losing money on my two recommendations, um, so.
Corinne, I, I'd just like to put out an alternate scenario to yours, based on my son, who's not necessarily, he didn't pay the several thousand dollars, $8,000 to install a, a level-two charger in his house, plugs it into his home current, okay? So what he does is, on the weekends, he'll go to some mall or something, pay the seven bucks and charge it up, and every week, during the week, Monday, every Monday night, you know, Monday through Friday, it goes down a little bit, he drives it during the day, charges it up at some small rate overnight, and then, so there are a group of people who will not spend $10,000 or $12,000 to install a, or $3,000 or $4,000, whatever it is, to install a level-two charger, and will use this as though, you know, I'm only gonna do it once a week, cause I can kinda keep the trickle charge going in my house, so, uh, you know, like I said, I think we oughta do it as a, as a test, price it first, period of time, go from there.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way to do it, um, because it is, it is still green, even if we're not losing money on it, it is still showing our commitment, and it's the right thing. But I, we just, I don't think we have the luxury of subsidizing or losing a lot of money on this, um, it's just not something I wanna look at on the, the budget every year.
And Corinne, we can, we can do a one-hour or a half-hour block?
Uh, yes, I will, you can set the increment at whatever time makes sense for us. It might even go down to 15 minutes, you know, I'm, I'm not totally sure, but those are just standard numbers.
Tom, the, the way I, I, again, you know, Corinne, you, you said 63 cents a kilowatt hour is likely to be our demand charge.
Yes.
And so at that rate, you know, if somebody uses on the average 12.8 kilowatt-hours per hour, it's about $8 an hour, $8.06 an hour. You know, and if, if, if we're only charged at the 25 cents per kilowatt hour rate, that's $3.20 an hour, but I don't think that's gonna happen. I think that, you know, when you plug it in, it's gonna surge, and we're gonna get that demand rate through there, which is the way it works.
I just had a question on top of page two, you said that ever-source is rating, is waiting for a, uh, DPU ruling for a charger tariff. So, National Grid's, well, yeah, National Grid's tariff does not have a demand charge, so it's down to a quarter, a quarter kilowatt hour, right? 25 cents? Why would, is ever-source?
My understanding is they built theirs similarly to the National Grid, um, model.
So why does National Grid's take away the, why does it take away the demand charge?
I, this is not something that I can speak in any detail to, that I've had like conversations with ever-source, conversations with HG&E, it's like learning how to talk about electricity at the same time that I'm learning electric vehicles.
So you're ahead of me.
So, yeah, um, so I, I, Lynn, I don't know if you know more, I, for whatever reason, National Grid already had two different rate plans in place, and ever-source only had the one, so they were ahead in that way, but, yeah, I don't know if you know more.
I had this explained to me before the pandemic, and don't for the life of me remember it enough to tell you here, um, but I am happy to come back and, and give you that information.
Because I, and we can always change the rate, if ever-source, uh, miracle happens, they'd have a lower rate. have a lower rate.
Well, first, based on experience, if nobody, if nobody uses these things, you know, then we've gotta understand why, but, but.
Well, yeah, I've, I have friends in DC who have cars that they go and they park in a garage and watch a show on their computer for an hour while it charges. That's the way people use them, and I, I think that that, it's still cheaper than gas, um, so, yeah.
So Corinne, one of my, my questions is that, you know, A, this eight dollars an hour that we calculate doesn't include the, whether it's strike or juice net or something, some fee transaction charge, correct?
No, that's.
That's just the electricity?
It's just the electricity. So like I said previously, if you wanted to try and capture in, like the other costs that I thought of, but I'm sure there's unforeseen costs, it would be twelve, twenty dollars an hour for, per session, if you wanted to cover the cost of how much we had to pay for the installation, how much we had to pay for the software connection, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, they charge us fifty cents just to process the credit card.
Right. So now you go from eight dollars to eight fifty are the actual town cost?
Well, my understanding is, this is the way that this was explained in a webinar, we would have to see once we actually set this up, but I don't believe it's a fifty-cent charge for the transaction, I believe it's a fifty cent minimum. So no matter what scenario we do here, somebody's gonna pay more than fifty cents, so that, that fee will be waived, whereas if they were just plugging in for a minute, you know, then we would say that's your minimum.
And the final more, most important question is, how and who administers this and what's the towns involved? I mean, we gonna have to hire two people to administer these things? You know, or, or is this, you know, we, we turn it on, we tell them what we want and then people just pay that and we, you know, somehow the money makes its way to the town and we pay the electric bill?
We're, we need to set all of that up. The first step was getting guidance from you, adopting a policy, then we go back and set everything up with, um, NLX, the company we're using. Um, some of this cost is also, includes our software and our maintenance plan. So ideally, we won't be responsible for anything that goes wrong for five years. But yes, there'll, there'll need to be some oversight, it'll either be out of, um, my office or the DPW.
Right, but, but ultimately, the town's gonna get checks that represent whatever it is and we're gonna pay electricity representing whatever is being used, right? It's, it's, it's on our electric bill.
Mm-hmm.
I assume it's separately metered too, so we can track it?
Yes.
Yes.
And, yes, and, and to what Lynn said earlier, we work with, uh, NLX, who is our liaison with Juice Net, and they, we tell them what we want, they set it all up. We have a dashboard that we can keep track of everything, but we theoretically don't have to, we just wait for those, uh, you know, if we use the payment processor, that will be one way. There is another way that I think we can directly set it up to a town account, but we would decide what that looks like after that conversation with NLX to kick it off.
Another, when you look at subsidies, you, you always wanna subsidize what you wanna see more of. And, you know, we look at, what are we gonna get from this? Clean air. We're gonna get less vehicles in our town that are burning fuel and they're just burning, using electricity instead, and there's an advantage to that. And, and, you know, encouraging people to, to move in that direction is a good choice and so I, yeah, I would go for eight dollars for an hour, four dollars for a half hour, increments of fifteen minutes, you know, two dollars, whatever. I think that would be a good place to start and hopefully the electric companies won't price us out of business kinda thing, but.
I was thinking the same thing, two dollars per fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
If we, if that's possible. Uh, that's a bit of, um, despite everything I said before, that's a bit of a, a bath on it for the town, but I, I do think it's good and we can start with it and then see if things, uh, I don't know why, but I'm thinking, you know, maybe Eversource will do something, but.
I, I, I agree with you, Josh, I just think that we oughta set ourselves a target of whether it's six months or nine months or something like that to try to capture the, the out-of-pocket expenses that once you get this set up and look at the, the revenue from it and see how, how much we missed by, because we know we're not gonna hit it exactly.
And if it does turn out to no one's.
And if it's close, you know, if it's close, we just stick with it, I mean, you know.
Yeah, and if, if we're too high and no one's using it, then it, we'll have to think about it. But if we have a decent amount of people using it, but it's not on all the time, then maybe that's, maybe that's ideal.
I mean, just remember, the, the ad on TV says, "Charge your car for eight bucks in seventeen minutes." That's what people are expecting, right? That, that's the IONIC hybrid, charge your car in seventeen minutes from, you know, eighty percent charge, seventeen minutes for eight bucks. And here we're saying, "Charge your car in an hour for eight bucks." So this is a good deal still.
So the, the last thing that I would say is that the, the more these machines are used, the cheaper it becomes for us. So i- if there's only a handful of people who use it, it, it will be more expensive for us, but because we have a flat rate that we're charged per month for access to the service, and then on top of that, uh, the, the less it's used, the more likely the charges are going to be demand charges as opposed to, uh, rate, the, the base rate. Um, that means that they will always be charged at the most expensive rate and will have to pay more per unit charging. Whereas if they're used more often, that cost is spread out more and the electricity itself comes down because it's not all demand charges. So that's, that's just the other consideration, is like if you could have those things being u-, every single one of those things being used four hours a day, that's how we would actually make money on this.
And one question on the, the logistics of charging, do, do people get a text when their phone or their car is done? Like can people walk away and, or if people live by, can, nearby, can they go home and go back when it's, when it's charged?
Most cars will tell you when it's.
Oh.
It's not the charger, it's the car.
Right.
Yes, I'm really showing my gas guzzling legs. Think about that.
Most cars will tell you.
I got a dumb car.
So, and Corinne, just, just to, what is the, uh, okay, I just lost my train of thought, that's fine, I was gonna ask about another charge here, but that's fine.
Okay.
Do you have anything, Dan?
Yeah, so just on the sites themselves, so how did we come about with the adult center as well as DPW? And I'm just, the reason why I ask is you were talking about the more, um, volume, right, the rates could, could potentially go down, and I don't think we should be looking at as this as a moneymaker for the town, I think it's the right thing to do for, you know, environment concerns. Um, but I do wanna see use and I'd love to see a lot of people using it, but I'm just curious like how we got it at the DPW and the adult center where I feel like there's other areas in town that would probably have greater use of these, um.
I can speak to that.
Where's the library? They didn't want it, yeah.
No, there's other, there's also.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, um, originally there was a plan, uh, before I got here for town hall, um, there, that was complicated because there's not a lot of parking at town hall and it's in the historic district, that we looked at the library, that didn't work out. Um, I felt that new construction, it should be included and/or considered, um, and the adult center is a place where people go and spend, you know, an hour, two, three, the whole day. Um, and then the DPW, um, again, I felt it was symbolic of new construction and hopefully some of our fleet cars will be electric. Um, Wolf Swamp, the same kind of idea that it was new construction and people go and spend time there, um, to watch a game or, or, you know, use the field themselves. And then the high school is the closest to the center of town essentially, that is town-owned property, and there was, um, some interest from the school to have chargers here.
Can we do the tennis courts?
The parking lot there?
We, we could have, or we can, yes.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's an example, I'm just saying there's other areas in town where there's gonna be more people.
There's not a lot of town property in a lot of places, unfortunately.
Did you mean Lynn Courts or Bliss?
Yeah, Lynn, because.
We could have done.
Because people can go to the shops still.
Right.
We, we could have, and the shops also can, can do this themselves, I mean, there's no, nothing preventing private business from doing this. Most, actually, most in our surrounding communities have. Big Y has banks of chargers in a lot of their stores. Unfortunately, I, I don't know why a lot of these private businesses haven't done it in Long Meadow.
They ran the math, yeah. Yeah.
Um, so we, the, the high school was selected, um, because, I, I suppose we could have looked at Lynn Courts, but there was a desire from some of the school population to have chargers here onsite.
And one last thing, so, um, cars that are just parked in these, um, spaces, can we still, um, charge if they're just parking there, say overnight, and they're almost like hogging the station? I just don't know how that works, but that's something I would like to prevent, of course.
That's why if we charge by the hour, it's by the hour they're plugged in.
Yeah.
It boos them to move as opposed to, you know, if they top off and their car automatically stops charging, you know, they're not getting, sucking in any electricity, so, you know, they could be there all night and only get so many kilowatts hours of electricity. So the out, per hour system.
Yeah.
Doesn't really solve the enforcement, but.
Right, right.
Let the market do it, I guess.
Yeah.
I was thinking that as well.
Corinne, these level-two, these are level-two charg-, what's, what's the voltage they use? Are they two-twenty or they're four-forty volts, right?
Two-forty, aren't they?
I think they're two-forty, but I don't.
Two-forty?
Yeah.
So they, so they charge a lot slower than the four-forty.
Yeah.
Level-two, I looked it up, it was two-forty.
Yeah, and the, so the level-three is, is what we're talking about for the installation on, um, Long Meadow Street at Laurel Park. And I believe that grants were only made available for those recently, which is why that would be our first level-three charger.
Yeah, those are much more expensive.
Yep.
So the investment there we'll be closely looking at, but they're much more desirable.
Well, can I just put in a plug, Lynn, for us to try and see what it happens to make our money on leasing the land and not on administering? I mean, I, I just don't think that this is our, our strong point, to be, be, you know, purveyors of electricity to, to, to residents as opposed to, there are lots of companies out there who do it.
Is it possible, if a company leases it from us, they could get a better rate than us?
I think they're, we only have the one rate plan, so businesses are charged the same rate that we recharge.
No, no, but if, if you're an electric vehicle charging company who has five thousand of these around the country and maybe five hundred of them in New England, you, who knows what you can negotiate? I won't speculate what you can negotiate as a rate with Eversource or somebody else.
Right, so maybe they could make it work for them and we could make straight money.
I guess the thing is, if, if there was a ma-, a way to make a lot of money on this, instead of us applying grants, they'd be coming trying to get us.
Wait a second.
Do it.
But outside, you go to California, there's a, there's vehicle charging stations about every three blocks, there's, they're getting as plentiful as, as gas stations, you know, and, and so if there's the demand, there will be the supply town. And there are comp-, there are companies who are out there installing these, they just need, need the demand and they need somebody to come along and say, you know, here's some land, you know, give us fifty bucks and you can have the, whatever it is, and you can.
But California's been promoting it a long time, and one of the things they did to, it was huge to promote, it was in the city of Los Angeles. If you had a hybrid, you could drive in the high-speed lane, you didn't have to have an extra passenger in your car. Next thing you know, everyone's driving a, a hybrid car, you know? Um, so yes, they've, they've gotten to that level where there's a lot of people driving electric cars and hybrid cars. Uh, we're not there in the east, we're just not there. It hasn't been subsidized and, um, you know, I think we're moving forwards as best we can do.
My only comment is, I'm not convinced that the town of Long Meadow is, is equipped to be in the, in the electric vehicle charging business as subcontractors or contractors or whatever, as opposed to making our money off of some other way of providing the service to residents.
Well, someone will buy us out, it's just like, you know, you used to be able to get free air to put in your tire, and now it's two dollars and the machines don't even work well, you know?
Still free big wax.
Yeah, yeah, depends where you go.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so, yeah, I think we can move on. Dan, do you have any thoughts on eight dollars or something else?
No, I just, I mean, I think overall, I was just thinking, it's, it's a, you know, to Mark's point, it's a double-edged sword. Um, we want people to use these stations, it's, it's good for the environment, we're moving in that direction. Um, I just am cautious on how much we're gonna, um, charge folks for using this, so that's.
Yeah.
But if we start with our costs, Dan, we can always move, you know, that's why.
So I mean, I'd rather see us, um, maybe evaluate the usage of, of these stations and then, um, make an adjustment maybe after a year, um, but just see how many people are actually using them and, and get that data.
Well, we gotta see what the new rate is in the fall.
The, what rate are you gonna charge while you see if people use it? Because if you give it away for free, the rate's gonna be, the, the usage is gonna be phenomenal, and then you're gonna say, well, now we can charge for it, and you're gonna misjudge it. I'd, I'd rather start here, somewhere in the middle and, and move it from there, because I think you, you, you can't start, can't start giving it by giving it away.
Could different stations have different rates? I'm just thinking of the, the adult center, for example, if we could give a break to our seniors that are charging up, I would be in favor of that.
Corinne, do you know if that would be possible?
I, I think it is possible. Um, I have to imagine it's possible, I, I don't know definitively, I don't know that, um, like, you know, in this, these examples, the, this, all three, Springfield are owned maybe by different, uh, operators, and in Holyoke, there's certainly different operators for those three examples, so, um, I, I don't know how complicated that would look without us having gone through the process with NLX yet.
Dan, I'd like to put in an argument for, start at a level that we understand, that we can justify, and that we're not gonna get all kinds of emails from people saying, "Why are you giving people, you know, giving electricity away to people?", and then move from there. And, and it can be social benefits as well as anything else, but I think we gotta start somewhere to gather data, and I think setting it, the justification of setting it at our cost does it for me.
Yeah, I know we, we look like, it, it's going to look different if we do the hourly rate, but we are in line with Agawam, not too far off from Springfield, uh, at least a couple of places. So, um, yeah, I, I think that that, that seems reasonable to me, and we are still, the town is still not making money on this, that's, that's for sure, so they're still subsidizing.
Yeah, no, I would agree.
We can argue we're losing money based on the capital investment, but that's something we made, well, we made a decision to do that, so it's fine with that.
Yes, yes.
So do, do we wanna motion now to, to, to adopt this?
Yeah.
Electric vehicle charging station policy? I'll move that we adopt the electrical vehicles charging station policy. It's shown on the last, uh, page of the handout with the count, finding, final count, the, the customer, electric vehicle operator shall be charged a fee of eight dollars per hour of usage or any part thereof to offset the cost of supplying electricity to the vehicle.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, Corinne, excellent job on that, is knocking out of the park today.
Thank you. The math is over.
Next up, we have the quarterly investment report. Is anybody coming into? Erica, you there?
Hey.
Ooh. I was coming out of somewhere.
Try again, Erica, you're, you're very faint.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, it's very faint, let me see if it's something I can check. I was coming through that right now, so it'll be. Can you try again?
No, that's our microphone.
Yeah.
Can you do, um, where's, where's the digital output going?
All right, try over time. Let me try. Let me try and totally my computer first to see if that helps anything. Erica, can you, can you speak over that? Sorry. Can you hear me now? Yeah?
I'm through the TV.
That's the TV now, okay.
What is the speakers?
So every, everyone's set to come through the apple, speakers would be probably just my computer that would come out of.
Sorry, Erica, we're having some trouble here.
All right, so it's out of my computer now? So it was okay before, I don't know why it's not working through the echo, so it's definitely something on our end because.
One more time. That's a little bit better.
A little better, yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you, go for it.
Did she call him?
Erica, are you still, sorry, we can't hear you if you're still talking.
I don't think so, because there's a screen light up. Yeah. Erica, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah.
Oh.
All right, much better.
Now we can hear you.
Do you want me to try over and hear it stuff?
It's on your end, I don't know if you're covering a microphone or fading in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That's perfect.
Okay, I'm not gonna do it. Um, so can I ask for my quarterly report on the status of the town's tax investment period ending?
Erica.
I can hear you again completely.
Not sure what's going on, sorry guys.
Can you call in, like for a cell phone, you can call into the Zoom.
I need to say this, but you could give this report as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to have a call in.
Yeah, it's nice to have staff cover their specific area. If you want me to, I'm happy to, I don't imagine it's gonna take very long.
Maybe she's calling you.
I think so. You can also jump to the next item if you'd like.
Joshua, she's trying to call me, so I just. Next slide. While we're waiting, Safe Roads to School Project, dedication easement rights.
Oh, she just came in.
All right, Erica, you there?
I'm here, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, that's great.
Now you gotta mute your, oh, okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Go for it.
Okay, I apologize for that. Okay, so tonight I'm submitting my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash investments for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. Individual bank balances were under the twenty million dollar provision. All banks receive the highest safety rating of Greens Preserving and all accounts are fully insured and secured. Closing the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we have seen some interest rates begin to rebound. Most noteworthy was People's Savings Bank, who is offering up one point one five percent on one of our daily depository accounts, which is up from, up from point two-two percent at the end of last quarter. I'd also like to add, if not written in this report, that since this time, that same account is now at one point nine-one percent. So we are seeing some great interest rates really starting to rebound, which is definitely helping our portfolio. Other interest rates haven't remained fairly consistent, but the Assistant Treasurer and I are still in close contact with our representatives from the bank. And we have heard that there are more interest rate increases coming shortly, so keeping an eye out for those. The O P A pension reserve investment fund thing can be extremely volatile and over the last three months has taken a loss each month with a net loss of approximately five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The June thirtieth balance is approximately five point six million dollars. In early June, a bank account audit was performed and one unauthorized account was found at People's, sorry, not People's, Bank of America, and the account has been closed. I continue to monitor all the accounts and we perform a yearly audit to make sure that there were no other unauthorized accounts that have been opened during the year. The Treasurer's Office continues to seek the best possible rate and diversify funds among our portfolio and making sure that we're in compliance with Massachusetts general law and regulations. We will continue to monitor all accounts to ensure safety and security of all of our investments.
Erica, this is Mark Gold, can you just, what is an unauthorized account that was found? What is that, I don't even know the account, I just wanna know what was meant by the term unauthorized account?
So, for instance, the parent teacher association, those get opened and raise the town's tax ID number, which is, which is not authorized. They're not technically town funds, so they shouldn't be under the E I N of the town.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, when, I guess, I, I assume when you close that, somebody gets notified that they gotta open up their own account under their own E I N number, right?
Yes, unfortunately, I don't typically have the right.
Right, the bank, the bank must know.
To close them.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, I have to work with the bank to notify the signers on the account and the bank aids me in getting those signers to close the account.
Right, we just tell them we can't use our tax on them, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So all the funds that went into the daily depository with the high interest rate, where did you move those out of for the most part?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, when did I move the funds in there or out of there?
Where did, where did they move out of?
So we moved a lot of the money from Munson and Adams, those were our two primary accounts. But those institutions dropped their interest rate to point five and point six percent. So obviously the interest rate wasn't as advantageous, so the funds have been moved into our daily accounts. But when taking a deeper look, it's more of us just not moving money out all of the time because that one account that earns the highest interest rate is our primary depository account. So we were constantly taking money out of that account to be in compliance with the policy. So now there's a lot less movement and we can keep the money there instead of transferring it over to Adams or Munson, who have a lower rate.
Okay, that was your next question, how the policy was affecting things, all right, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's, it's been very advantageous, I'm very glad we're able to, to change that enough the limit.
All right, great.
Erica, again, this is Mark Gold, just a question about our lockbox account, you know, the.
Yeah.
We have a lot of money in, it's called the lockbox account. Is that in one of our bank accounts just segregated as called the lockbox account? Or is that something that the company who, you know, does the lockbox system for us maintains and they transfer money to us?
Nope, so that's our bank account in Eastern Bank. And I go in there and either on a daily or every other day, I transfer the funds out to a higher interest rate because as you'll see in the lockbox account, it's a point zero five percent and we're not earning much on that. So every day I take those funds out and I transfer them to a higher yielding account so that we can gain more benefit from those funds.
Thank you.
This is Tom, I just have a question, usually we get a list of all the deposits and all the different banks and the interest rates that they are giving us. Isn't that what we usually get?
Yeah, it is there, Tom, you gotta, you gotta go down to the, it's called the second quarter investment report, it's the second page.
I, I, all I, I, maybe I'm lost then.
There's three, there's three of them.
There's three of them there? Because I looked at the O P A and I looked at the covered letter and there's a second one there, so I'll look at our third one. Which is, yeah, that's what I was looking for, okay, so good, I'm glad you're still getting that, I just have to phone up.
Middle.
The middle?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there it is, okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
No.
All right, great, thank you very much, Erica, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience, have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Okay, I know.
All right, next on the agenda, Safe Rule, Safe Roads to School Project, dedication of easement rights.
So we also have Town Engineer Tim Keen in the chat right now, I'm gonna move him in. Hey, Tim, can you hear us all right?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Tim.
All right, well, the first item here is Safe Roads to School is a dedication that the town needs to make for the. The project involves new sidewalk along Bliss, the new bike platform from Blueberry Hill Road up in the school. So it is town property, but it had to go through the easement process, permanent and temporary construction easements. This document, the state sit along, was drafted by our town town council and reviewed by the state. There was a lot of back and forth between those two parties. But this is where, where they landed on what needs to be signed off on in order to dedicate that land to the project.
Let me just remind everyone listening, what's the, what is the purpose of the project, what's the goal here?
Well, there is that sidewalks, there are incomplete sidewalk segment on Bliss, under, in front of, uh, practice fields on the, on the south side of Bliss Road. So that, that's part of the project, a complete, I think, um, it's a block, block oriented up towards the administrative office entranceway. And then the other part of the project is basically a shared use path along Blueberry Hill Road. It goes from Bliss up to the school, so the kids have a, a wider lane to ride their bikes or walk. It's kind of between the fence and the existing sidewalk.
Tim, this is Mark Gold, the, the accompanying document has a map with easements and it seems to me that the easements go, and I, I'm not sure. It seems to me these, some of these easements go beyond what I'll call town property. They go down Blueberry, down William Street, you know, quite a ways, I'm trying to see where they go to.
No, Bliss, not Bliss.
No, they go down Bliss all, almost all the way to Burbank, according to this document.
There are some ramp along that part of it, there's some ADA ramps that are going to be installed, but it won't, there won't be new sidewalk down that far.
Okay, so.
There's actually a, a part, I think, one section of, of ramp that goes, but there's not a reciprocating ramp on the other side of the street, so that will be removed. But most of the work down on that part is installing ADA ramps at the existing sidewalk.
Okay, so these easements are all town, town property easements, there are no private.
Town properties, yeah, town properties.
Thank you.
I just know that the easement still has Steve's name.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I'll make, I'll make a motion, we authorize these, dedication easement rights for properties along Bliss Road as, as outlined in this, this document sufficient to complete the Safe Roads to School Project for Blueberry Hill School.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, thank you very much, Tim, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We need to sign this now or we need to?
We have it here in Lynn Broder notary, so we could do it.
Oh, you're in?
Yeah.
Through the notary?
For us. And in terms of Steve's name being on there, it was drafted before he was off the board, so I think we could just redact that.
I think you don't even need to redact it, just don't sign it.
Yeah, right, right, exactly. And Tim's actually here for one more topic as well, the next one.
Okay, great, yeah, the asset man, asset management planning financing application.
Yes, the background on this is the town was awarded the asset management grant, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, basically for the store bar infrastructure, ranking and prioritization of, of parts of the system. There's a fifty thousand dollar, a town allotment and a fifty thousand dollar aid kind match, which will primarily be D D W labor. So it all involves a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, Tyron Bond's engineer, they, they have their agreement in place. And this is a form, our vote needs to be taken to authorize the town manager to enter the agreement with the state, basically for the D E P and the pain water fund for, for the money to, for the loan to be completed, I guess you would say.
Did you apply for?
It's a re-encircable grant.
Did you apply for the grant, Tim?
Yes, Tyron Bond was, helped us a lot with it, but yes.
Oh, that's great, thank you for doing that, that's a fantastic thing.
So Lynn, what, or Tim, whatever, what, what projects are being, going to be completed with this grant money?
We'll only have a look at all of the stormwater infrastructure, but we're gonna, we'll probably focus on some of the areas that we know we have road, upcoming road projects. You know, our five-year work ahead on roads, and then some other probably areas in town. Our, and actually, Blueberry Hill area is one of the areas that we've had some flooding in before, so the first thing we're gonna do is have a, a project kickoff be with Tyron Bond, build up the maps, kind of, you know, prioritize where we wanna start looking, camera work and that kind of thing.
Okay, so this, this wasn't a, a grant based on specific projects, but rather on completing stormwater projects for the town? Yet to be defined.
We didn't identify, you know, particular pipe segments or anything like that, it was.
Okay, that, that's what I didn't understand, okay, so it's to be defined segments.
Okay, yes.
I just had, on the, on the memo, the, the second pair, or the numbered sections, it said that the purpose of said loans, if awarded, shall be to fund construction activities. Shouldn't that read fund, you know, stormwater construction activities? Just to be specific, is that's exactly what this money would be used for?
I, I saw that too, I, I, I put a call to Tyron Bond, I didn't get back with, it's really, the, the construction activities would be subsequent to the study, so. It is a state's kind of generic form, I believe, they just put in our project there. But this, this, this phase then is, is really a rapid prioritization of our stormwater, portions of our stormwater system to see where we're gonna actually, you know, put construction projects to make new remedial fixes.
So our requirement, Lynn, is to pass this certified U S the authority to file, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if we need to read this whole document or just say that I moved that we approved the document that certifies town manager Lynn Simmons and certify sort of file for application and completion of stormwater asset management project. I guess we gotta say C W S R F dash seven zero zero seven.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you, Tim.
You.
Nice work.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Tim.
Good night.
Street closure and block party applications, Center School Carnival.
I'll move we approve the street closure for the Center for School Carnival on Friday, September thirtieth, from three thirty to seven P M with a rain date of Friday, September.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Second.
That's not right.
Oops.
That's not right.
I could check that real quick.
No, I got it.
Friday, nine twenty-three with a rain date of nine thirty.
Thanks. Nine twenty-three with a rain date of September thirtieth.
Second.
Yeah, I thought I seconded it.
I'm sorry, yeah, all those in favor? Captain Road Block Party Application to close Captain Road between Williams and Caravelle on September, on Saturday, August thirteenth from three to eight, rain date, August fourteenth.
I'll move that we approve the closure of Captain Road for block party as stated.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay. One-day liquor license application, L A C C F, Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund. Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund, uh, for an adult, for an event to be held August eleventh and August twenty-sixth, from five to seven thirty. Mary Beth? Would you like to come speak?
You can just get some other questions and.
Oh, okay.
You've been here.
It's up to you then.
There are actually two requests here.
Yes.
One's for August eleventh, and the other's for August twenty-sixth, there's.
Yeah, it's listed on event date.
Alright, so I'll, I'll move to accept this, or grant a one day liquor license for the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund. A one day liquor license for August eleventh and August twenty-sixth, from five to seven P M, or from five to seven thirty P M.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I.
Go ahead, Mark.
The last time this came up, we, we had some discussion as well, and I think we still haven't come up with a policy about liquor sales at, at town owned buildings, that, or liquor usage at town owned buildings, and I think we still need to do that, and putting it off isn't, isn't helping.
It's the next item on the agenda.
Okay, and, you know, one of the issues that we had, and, and, and I, you know, I got a couple of calls after the last one that happened, uh, and because, and I don't know any of the details, I don't know the specifics, but my understanding is somebody was hurt. And I don't believe that this has anything to do with the liquor, the selling, sale of liquor, or whatever it is, but there were people telling me that it was, there were too many people there, it was too crowded, somebody tripped, or whatever it was, and, and I think it, it raises the issue of A, the town's liability, and B, when I, something I asked at the last session was, is this a, a town sponsored program, or is this a private program of the L A C C F? And, you know, the applications from the L A C C F, it's an L A C C F system, and I think that for some, because of potential liability, the town needs to, for lack of a better word, distance itself from this, and make it pretty clear that it's not a, a, an adult center sponsored program. If it was an adult centered sponsored program, I would have accepted, expected that the adult center would be applying for this liquor license, that's being applied for as a, if you will, a private outside organization, that's not the adult center, and so I, I'd like to offer an amendment that, that this, like, these two one day liquor licenses be approved with the acknowledgement and, and with the clear understanding, and by that I mean included in any communications about this, this, this uh, this party or this event, that it is not sponsored by the Long Meadow Adult Center, that it is not a, a formal program of the Long Meadow Adult Center. And, because it, I think there's some people losing track of whether this is a Long Meadow Adult Center program, or it's a private facility program. And my understanding is, based on this application, it's an application from a private organization.
Mary Beth, how are these events advertised?
There's a, there's an amendment out on the table, I'd like to, either get it seconded or not.
Okay, motion fails for now. Uh, Mary Beth, could you explain how these are advertised?
Sure. I work with the adult center, L A C C F works with the adult center staff, the event planner and the director. Um, we have come up with ideas to support the center. Um, we pay, for example, on the summer soiree, uh, we pay for the guitarist, and we pay for, um, the refreshments, and they put it in the voice, which is, um, the monthly advertisement for, uh, events, all events at the center. Um, and oftentimes, we'll put it on Facebook, perhaps Lindsay will put it on Facebook, and that's how it's advertised.
Okay, so the adult center, Lindsay Gill.
Yeah, we work in cooperation together, yes. Just like Faloka has for forty years.
Okay.
So, so the problem I have, Mary Beth, is that it's an adults, then it's an adult center pro, if it, it's either an adult center program or it's not. Right now, this is neither fish nor fowl. You know, it, your name's on this, you get the liability, but you're telling me it's an adult center program. And it's not, if, if it is, they ought to be applying for it, they ought to be doing, running these things. If they're not willing to do this, then, you know, we're, we're in, in a tough position, and I'm speaking almost entirely out of potential liability. As a private nonprofit organization, your liquor license application, your liability. So, and I'm trying to give the town breathing room and separation from potential liability, because you know, like I said, something happened at one of the events, I don't think it was related to the fact that liquor was being served, but there were people there. And, and so, you know, if, if it's, you know, if, if I rented it out for a party, and somebody fell and got hurt, you know, they should come after the person who rented it out first, and not the town, because I rented it out. The problem is, we don't have that, that clarity at this point, because, you know, that what, you know, it hasn't, it may have nothing to do with the fact that liquor was being served, it still has something to do with the fact that there's potential liability to the town, of having an event there, that we don't know whose event it is. Because I don't know whose event it is, you're just telling me that they're planning it, if they're planning it, then their name should be on this liquor license. It's that simple.
Well, Mark, if the, the thing is, you know, all the years I've been on the board, I don't know any town department that's ever asked for liquor license. Not the recreation department, not any of the sports teams, not the schools, you know.
Why do you think that is not?
Well, we're, we're gonna have teachers, we're gonna have a party, we're gonna have alcohol, we want to have a liquor license.
Why do you think that is?
No, I, I don't know, I don't know. Maybe that isn't part of what town departments see as their purview, you know, they just don't do it, you know. But this is a, and out, you know, it's an organization in town.
I'm not, I'm not arguing the, the event, I'm not arguing the organization. Because, uh, you know, the, the response is that, you know, nobody from town has come for a liquor license, but then again, no town organization has come to run a party where they've, they run the party and they serve liquor. Nobody's done.
I've never seen it.
Nobody's right, because it hasn't happened.
Right.
You know, and, and if, it's a, if it's a town organization, if it's an adult center sponsored event, then the adult center, you know, organization, the staff ought to be soup to nuts responsible for what goes on there, and it's not happening. So you can't have your cake but not eat it. You can't say, you take this part and we'll take that part. It's either an adult center program, or it's not an adult center program. It's that simple, Tom.
But I.
And all I'm asking for is to define it.
What is the difference, if someone rents the community house, and they serve liquor there, and they get a one day liquor license?
Right, they rented it out, but, 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 it's right. And Barry Jarvis has nothing to do with it, as the park and rec department, you're right, and we've, and we've rented it out.
Yes.
Absolutely, and that's what I'm saying here. If this is a, if this is a, you know, L A C C F program, that's fine, they're, they're allowed to rent out the, we have a policy, they can rent out the building, we have a policy, they can have a liquor license, that's fine, but it needs to be an L A C C F program. It can't be a town program with somebody else taking on the liquor license. That's my point. You can't, you can't, you know, subcontract the liability to Mary Beth Bergeron because she's willing to take it. If it's a town program, it's a town program. It's that straightforward in my mind, and that's the difficulty.
If I could just make the comment, Mark, um, the fact that we're applying, L A C C F is applying for the liquor license, we have insurance, which names the town of Long Meadow, which I've provided, um, the town with a copy of that insurance certificate, so that is another layer of protection for the town, when it comes to these events.
But the town has insurance. The town's got lots of insurance, so with all due respect, the town doesn't need that extra layer of insurance, you know, it's always nice to have more, but we don't need it. I mean, the, the whole point is, you know, we're, and I don't know this, but my perception is, you know, the town is subcontracting out the, the, the liquors program to you. And they shouldn't do that. It, it should not be done. It's, if it's a town program, it's gotta be a town pro, you know, obviously, I'm not making any headway here, people understanding what's going on. But this, you know, we can't continue to have town programs with somebody else taking responsibility for the liquor license. It's either a town program, or it's not a town program. And if it's not a town program, then the town shouldn't have anything to do with it. It should be an L A C C F program.
Well, so your problem, your problem is not with this event, it's just that the adult center advertises it.
Well, it, it, it's like, you know, anything else that, that happens, you know, and we don't have to be just the adult center. You know, if, if the park and rec department goes and starts pushing, saying, we're gonna promote the Leaf banquet that's in the community house, that we used to have every year, you know, then it becomes a, a park and rec, or the school department, but the school department had nothing at all to do with Leaf events that were in the community house. Leaf came in, Leaf rented the room, Leaf took out the one day liquor license, and Leaf ran the event. It was for the benefit of the town, it was all tense, and I think that's a great analogy, it was great, but it wasn't the school department doing it. Had nothing to do with it, and it was a very clean break between what the town's doing, and what the, what the, the Leaf organization was doing, and similarly, you know, that's my, my point is, this is either a town program, or we're leasing out the building to an organization to run a program, that, yes, there's a relationship with the, with the community program, with the, the adult center, but it's run by a separate program. And frankly, we're gonna get down to the point where, if we're using town resources, as, as Mary Beth said, if Lindsay Gill is working on this, then it becomes a town program, and it ought to be a town program. You know, you can't have your cake and eat, you can't have the town do the work, and Mary Beth Bergeron and the L A C C F take the liability. I just don't think that's, that's the right way to run a, run a show here.
Well, I, I, on the agenda, I put this before, we, we're gonna, next we're gonna do a one day liquor license policy discussion. This application was done now with the benefit of having our conversation, we've been talking about doing for a while. Um, I think we continue on with this, I, there's some other underlying issues that I will not claim to entirely understand at the adult center, and I'm trying to get a handle on that. Um, but I, I think we go ahead, there hasn't been any problems, I, I think if somebody got hurt, I don't think it was because they had one glass of wine at the event, um, so I, I'd say we approve these, and we can, we're gonna have to talk about a policy discussion right away, so.
I disagree, but, uh, your rights to do yours and mine's rights to do what I want to do.
Great.
So the motion's on the table.
We have a motion with an amendment, that was not, amendment was not taken, so we have a motion on the table, we have a second.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, as promised, uh, one day liquor license policy discussion. Uh, so, we, I think Tom might have said this was the only liquor, one day liquor license, he, he saw not approve the, um, the party at the adult center. Uh, I might, let me know if I'm speaking.
No, from a, from a specific town entity.
Oh, no, no, when we, a month or so back, when we, we didn't approve a, like, a one day liquor license for a graduation party. And I think that was, that was the first inkling, well, this was the inkling.
There should be limits, yeah.
Yes, and that we need to have a policy in place for people to, uh, so they know when they're applying, if, uh, so there's rules set in place. Um, from talking with Lynn and Mike, I understand that there, uh, used to be people would rent out the community house for, uh, events, and they could get a one day liquor license, and uh, that is a thing that happened, I was not, I wasn't aware of that, hasn't, I haven't seen any of that since I've been in town. Um, but I, I don't know if there's ever been a policy in place, but we should get something in writing, so people know what they're applying for, um, and I, Mark, why don't you start and say what you think the policy should be with regards to these uh, one offs that we keep seeing at the adult center?
Well, I, you know, the, I, I won't speak to the one offs, because I, I think they're, they're unusual. I think that the issue for me is, we, we, we need to decide, are we gonna allow liquor to be so, served in town, town buildings and facilities or not? And if we are, okay, do we restrict it so that we don't allow, you know, anybody under the age of twenty-one to attend that event? Because that's where we ran into issues a, a month or so ago, that was gonna be kids under twenty-one there. You know, to me, that's kind of the decision tree here. You know, my personal opinion is that, that, you know, there's, there's issues with liquor licenses, and so, and serving liquor in town buildings, but we've managed it, and we can manage it in the town of Long Meadow. And so I'm not coming out and saying, no liquor at all in town buildings, but I think we have to put some kind of a constraint on it, that it cannot be a town managed facility, you know, uh, event, it has to be an outside organization. I would like to think that it, you know, it ought to be a related organization, but you know, maybe we got somebody who wants to run a wedding and, and reception in, in the community house, which isn't, you know, isn't Leaf or something like that, and if that's the case, maybe we do that, but, but from my perspective, like I said, the first decision is yes or no, and if, if we allow it, then are we gonna have any, any constraints on it? You know, and, and maybe we also say, and we're gonna limit it to, you know, never in the Long Meadow High School, and never in the a school building, and that, you know, I mean, we can do that, and that may make some sense to do, do as well, or just say, it's either the community house and/or the adult center, you know, multipurpose room, and that's it.
Well, one of the things we talked about when we were doing the adult center, setting the fees, is do we wanna try to limit people from out of town coming in? And, uh, is, I think that's also a consideration, so, just to continue the conversation, I, I am okay with having it in town buildings, I, I think cutting out the schools is a great idea. And, uh, I do not think that we should allow it to, when there's mixed ages, so twenty-one up, full stop, I think that, that's where we should keep it at. Um, and, uh, beyond that, I've lost my train of thought, so somebody else has to talk.
Do, do, excuse me, Josh, you had said town residents, does it, must it be sponsored by a town resident?
Yes, and that's the other thing I was thinking, uh, is it, do we want to limit it to town residents or town uh, organizations that are able to get the license? Uh, which I think is also a reasonable, uh, a reasonable limit, limitation, uh, so the people in town get the first crack. Uh, adult center now, I, I think we did end up where it does not have to be a town residence, it's more expensive for other people, right?
For the facility rental?
Right.
But that's different from, that's different from a liquor license.
No, but that's not what we did. It was telling, yeah, no, I agree, I, I'm just having a, using it as an example, no, I agree.
You're talking about the rating system for.
Yes.
Yeah, you can, you can be a non-resident and rent out.
Yeah, there isn't a different rate, it's, uh, different times.
Different categories.
Categories, yeah.
I mean, we.
So it's preferential.
Just so you know, we used to have, and I don't know, I don't think anymore, we had a church group that rented out the community house every Sunday, I don't know if they still do, but, but, they were clearly not, you know, I mean, they're residents of town who are members of that church group, but the group itself was not a, a long middle organization, and that operated for years, but that's a rental policy.
No, that's a rental policy, this is different, I'm, I'm saying, do we want to limit, uh, the liquor licenses to people in town, or, uh, organizations in town? Presumably, they'd be more responsible with our town property.
Do we have police detail, if there's like a certain crowd number?
We can require that.
Something that?
No, we can, we can certainly require it and put that as part of the policy. Tom?
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, I think we should allow liquor in, in buildings, and obviously, I think schools no longer allow any alcohol in their facilities, so that, we don't have to worry about that. I think it's, it's a conservative approach, it's like if you, if you look at bars, you know, they don't allow children in bars, you can't, you know, restaurants are seen different, you know, and so it would be a more conservative approach to just say, it wouldn't be a mixed crowd, you know. So then, people who were gonna do something like a birthday party, you know, they're gonna have out of town people, obviously, um, but they would just know that this was gonna be adults only, and if that, if they wanted a party, it was gonna be people of different ages, they'd have to do it on a different location, you know, or do without alcohol. Now, it's, it's, you know, I don't know, you know, the question about size, I mean, I guess we could have a, a statue, you know, that sort of said over so many people that you would have to have, hire a police officer, have them on site, and, and, you know, that's pretty, I've heard that before, you know, but, um, you know, I guess we've, we haven't had a lot of discussions about this, because it doesn't really come up that much.
Tom, a question for you, you said alcohol, all alcohol or beer and wine?
Well, that's, you know, when. Well, that's, you know, when you, sir, if you're, if you're serving hard alcohol, then you, you can't, you definitely can't have any children there. But should we serve beer, beef one, beer one? I, I think that beer, I would prefer that we would lean towards beer and wine, but there are people who are not gonna have an event without hard liquor.
And they can hold it somewhere else.
Yeah.
You know, in my opinion, but, sorry for that, but that's my opinion.
No, I think that it would discourage a lot of people.
We're not the only social halls in, in the area.
Yeah, right.
Go to the Ameri, the Veterans Club or something.
I think we'd reduce our liability if it was just beer and wine. I mean, you, I don't see why you'd need to have it on a town property where people are gonna have to drink hard liquor. I don't know if other people thought about that.
Right, Leaf is a good example. Leaf is a night out. People get babysitters, people take an Uber. It, it's at Twin Hills now, but it'd be nice to have it at a town facility. I don't know if it'd be nice.
Depends on the serving now.
Well, yeah. Yeah, that, that's a tough question. I don't know. And I was just thinking, police detail, I, I would like some input from the police department, what they would think, a, a number where they feel like they wouldn't be comfortable without some sort of detail.
Would this also apply to the town green or some other outside space as well? A park?
Alcohol's already prohibited on the town green. This is, questions come up a lot lately. Some events we're talking about internally, some of, there's been some just confusion and, and miscommunication. So we're working on streamlining that internally when people apply with the use of the green specifically. That's come up a bit. Some of the block party permits too, because there's an impact for public safety. If a part of the road is blocked, we need to make sure they know. And then there's just been some other weird ones that have come up where they're not really blocking the whole road, just a parking space of it for a small event. So we've been discussing this a lot. You do have a select board town manager policy that is actually quite old. The last update was done in twenty sixteen, where for events on town property or premises where alcohol beverages will be served, then you, you go into detail about requiring insurance. And then it says, for insurance purposes, town departments may not be applicants for one-day liquor licenses. The last time that was updated was twenty sixteen. And just quickly, on the liquor list, on the short-term liquor licenses, I was just looking this up because it's what I remembered and I wanted to make sure they hadn't changed it. Only nonprofits are avail, are eligible to apply for short-term all-alcohol licenses. Like a general member of the public couldn't, or a private business couldn't.
Oh, so a party can't have hard alcohol anyway?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, not with a short-term license, right?
Right. Oh, interesting. Okay.
And I, I know with outdoor events, because a lot of colleges and universities have them, and they, they have to have a perimeter. You can't, you know, you, you can drink in a certain area, but you can't. No one can just walk in that area. You have to ID them and stuff, but... I guess, you know, we're just lucky that we don't get a lot of demand for that, you know. Because, you know, we could have, who knows, biker rallies, I mean, you know, anything's possible, you know.
So for liability purposes, if we don't want town departments applying for a one-day license, I would think the liability would extend to using an outside group as, as a proxy. But whether, but working with, like, the Adults, the Adult Center, it makes sense to find a time, an event that would fit, so it's kind of a fine line.
Well, it's nice to have an organization that is a nonprofit that is dedicated to raising funds for the seniors in town. That, that seems like, you say, okay, versus a, a nonprofit that is, you know, interested in promoting, who knows what, you know, I mean, or just certain individuals. That's it.
We were told these aren't fundraisers though. They're not fundraisers.
Well, they don't do fundraising with the, yeah, these events are not fundraisers. No, no. But the mission of the nonprofit is towards the town, you know, versus someone whose mission is to, you know, it could be anything. It could be a scholarship fund for people in another country, you know, or it could be a scholarship fund for people in our town. I mean, you know, how do we, you know, we have to discuss it and come up with a, a policy that's fair to members of the town.
Could we update the policy you mentioned before with this info? Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if you could send that out to us. But we can include, I'd have to see it, I guess, to see what, how we need to tweak it. But it sounded like it accomplished a good amount of what we already, what we wanted to talk about.
It'd be interesting to see the minutes from those meetings too, to, as to why you called out that town departments may not be applicants for one-day liquor licenses.
What's the, when was it approved?
Two thousand five was the adoptive, adoption date. It was amended in two thousand seven. So, March twenty-first, two thousand five, it was adopted. It was amended January sixteenth, two thousand seven. And then it was affirmed by the Select Board November seventh, two thousand sixteen.
So, what was the middle date, Lynn?
Uh, January sixteenth, twenty, two thousand seven.
Okay, I'll go back and look at the minutes.
Yeah, look at that over would be helpful.
Yeah, so if you could send that out, just to, I just wanted to have a conversation, I had to get it started. And I think we're, well, I guess we got there in two thousand five, but if we get to know why and if we need to continue to tweak it.
Yeah. I mean, if you're able to, if you're willing to listen to me for a minute, I, at this point, would not support town departments being applicants. I think it's a, it's outside of the scope of their duties to be responsible for serving beer or wine or overseeing it. So, I, I, at this point, would not be supportive of a change in that policy there.
I think that's, yeah, I, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but that seems totally reasonable to me. In our litigious world, you don't wanna give the deep pockets that much responsibility. So, when, I hate to keep coming back to the LACCf events, but what is the involvement in the Adult Center staff in the parties? I'll ask you, Lynn, if you know.
So, from, there's a hybrid sometimes, depending on what's happening. LACCf will bring a program forward, assist with some of the planning, but a lot of it is passed to staff to promote, sell tickets if there's ticket sales, or RSVPs, that type of thing. They help with room setup and then just overall coordination. But then, LACCf is there as an active participant and partner, certainly running the bar. That's completely separate from staff. They don't have any involvement in that. It's a, it, this, these kind, it's not lost on me that these conversations are good problems to have because it means that it's an active center, that there's people in there, there's people that have strong opinions on both sides, but that means they're there seeing it and partaking in it. So I think this is just a happy coincidence that we've opened a brand-new beautiful building that's really popular, and some of these are gonna be growing pains. So, it's something that I'm meeting with staff on monthly there at the, at the center as we're analyzing what's working, what's not. And I do think that there's gonna be further communication with them about, as we turn the corner to a year mark, what does it look like moving forward? Because to some extent, it's not this, the pace at which we're doing all of these programs is not sustainable for the small staff that we have there. So we, without such willing participants in both of our fundraising arms, LACCf and Faloka, some of this wouldn't be able to hap, most of this wouldn't be able to happen without their support. So, that's also important to recognize too. But I do think I, I need to work with staff to figure out what they can maintain and where those lines are drawn.
Okay. All right, well, so in the meantime, if you could send out the policy and we can take a look at it.
So I, because I have everything on this computer. I've, I've pulled up the policy. I've also got the minutes from, from the meeting, and it was just the, the minutes are pretty straightforward. We can, we affirm the, this was in, in twenty sixteen, we affirm the current one-day liquor license policy. That was it.
It might have been a review of all the-
It was. We were just going through, and there was a bunch that were done there. Legal services policy, the liquor license, there was a bunch of things confirmed at the same time.
So I can take, if you guys want, I could take a look at oh-five and oh-seven?
Please, given, given the hour, I think we'll revisit this after we see it.
I would have to go through the copy archives anyway.
You were at that meeting.
Was it that meeting? We just affirmed it? Yeah. Well, again, who, who asks for liquor license? Usually it's, it's the church, you know. You know, there's not a lot of groups that ask for it.
All right, well, we will revisit. Next, set the state primary election warrant. We have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we follow Secretary of the Commonwealth Francis, William Francis Galvin's warrant for the twenty-twenty-two state primary in the town of Long Meadow for the office of governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, secretary of state, treasurer, auditor, representative of Congress, counselor, senator and general court, representative and general court, district attorney and sheriff.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And finally, the fall, special town meeting article submission schedule.
We approve the special fall town meeting. Article submission schedule is dated August first, twenty twenty-two.
And just so people, anyone listening, knows, the, all articles for departments or board due in the Select Board's office by noon September ninth, and citizens' petitions also by noon September ninth. And for a special town meeting, that is one hundred names, signatures and addressing of registered town voters. That must be certified.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All, all those in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Oh, you're moving to adjourn, Dan?
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and Tom, seconds? All those in favor? All right, thank you, everyone.